No, roll call's next, right?
Oh, if you're right.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Adrian, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hold's call. Mayor Pro Tem Vinyal.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Mayor Hold's call had a doctor's appointment out of town and said he would not be able to be here tonight. Could I have a motion to excuse?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Now, we will move on to audience communication. And I will start here in the chamber if anyone in here would like to speak. Okay, I see no hands, so I'll go ahead and move online. Barb?
Good evening. Barb Heidel, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place, southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I wish to thank Tracy Dyson from the Public Works Department for his help at the Mill Creek Festival. Once he had driven the trailer to the festival with all the equipment and materials needed that weekend, he proceeded to help empty the trailer, then set up the tents and tables. I truly appreciate all his help. The festival seemed to be a big success with so many people attending, even with the rather oppressive heat on Saturday. As always, the police motorcycle was a very big hit with children and adults. This event is a fantastic opportunity for the community to enjoy what our city has to offer. I'm grateful for the chamber for holding this every summer. Lastly, I hope everyone will come to National Night Out next Tuesday evening at Buffalo Park. It should be a fun night for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Do I have anyone else online that would like to make a comment? Last chance for any comments. There will be another chance at the end of the meeting. So now we will move on. If there's no objection tonight, we would like to move item six C to item six B so that we can hear the citywide update before the finance update. Is there any objection? Perfect. Thank you. So we will start on with our presentations and tonight we will start with a proclamation for National Night Out. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August first, two thousand twenty-three entitled National Night Out. And whereas the thirty-ninth National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Mill Creek Police to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Mill Creek Police Department plays a vital role in assisting surrounding agencies throughout joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Snohomish County and is supporting National Night Out two thousand twenty-three locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Mill Creek be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their programs have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Mill Creek. And whereas the residents, businesses, families, and neighborhoods of Mill Creek have professed their support for law enforcement and the Mill Creek Police Department. And whereas police-to-community partnerships, neighborhood safety and awareness and cooperation are all important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the city of Mill Creek and its police department have partnered with the residents, businesses, families, and neighborhoods of Mill Creek to cultivate police-to-community relations by participating in National Night Out. Now, therefore, I, Stephanie Vinyal, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Mill Creek, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim August first, two thousand twenty-third as National Night Out in the city of Mill Creek. Thank you. So next up, we will have city manager doing the citywide quarterly update.
Is someone talking?
Not yet. You're talking, Joe.
Thank you. I was just helping chief. Sorry. There's an issue going on.
All right, computer over here. Okay. All right. Well, thanks. Uh, where's the control? All right, council. Welcome. Thank you, audience, staff. Quarter two. Here's a not for me again. To present all of you the competence for our quarter two, give you kind of an idea of kind of what we're working on for quarter three, anything pertinent to the city. So I'll start with agenda. Over the agenda, I'll just cover all the departments, kind of what's important. We've been working on the executive office and then the top things across all of our departments that were submitted to me by the heads of all those departments. So I'll start off with the executive office. One of the things that we've been working on in Q two was bringing in some consultants. We have two actually coming in that we were preparing for to commence on August tenth, a training program for our leadership team and supervisors and managers as well that will help reinforce kind of the skills that we already have. It's a little bit a shift from our typical management and leadership training, whereas they're going to really kind of get in the weeds a little bit and kind of learn about what our challenges are, things that we need to improve on and possibly give us new approaches to the work on going forward and how we manage our employees to work together as a team. So that's a big thing coming up in this third quarter. It's a six-month program, so this will cross into the year and we'll finish up in the middle of towards the end of the year. Sorry. The next thing is, as you know, we recently kind of reviewed some of the consultants that came in recent past. We decided that as a group, can council decide they want to kind of reach back out to a new group of consultants that we're going to review in the coming month? And then we'll bring these forward to council. We have about four to six that we think some really good viable candidates, some new ones with the consultants that we brought in recently. We just mentioned to them that we that we are bringing new ones in, but we did not tell them that they're completely excluded out from the process. So we want to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to those two had an opportunity to come back as well if council should decide that. But what we bring in forwards, I'm not sure how many, probably four to six. And so you'll see those in September sometime. Next big thing is encampment cleanup across the city. You know, the clean, safe and well-maintained phrase that Director Todd created is actually in our goals as well is something that we've been working on in quarter two more so, more heavily now. As you'll see in our agenda today, we're going to bring forward a resolution to move forward with one of those areas that we would like being cleaned up. So but that's been a big effort this past quarter. Behind the QFC over here, working on that, and she's working with the state on that one. And also with the Elliott property up on the east side of Bothwell, just south of Les Schwab. We're also working on a number of other areas across the city that we come across. And so we will address those as we come across those in the future. City Hall North Space Rim. We've been working pretty hard to fill spaces in our city here in Salt City Hall North Building. As of now, we have two existing clients, Northwest Appraisals as well as Hunt Ron. That takes up the majority of that warehouse space down there. We do have some potential. We haven't put ink to paper yet. We have some potential clients coming in, some lessies that will take up almost all that space up there. We do probably have maybe eight, eight hundred thousand square feet left. Assuming that we get these clients in, and as we, one of those is actually in our room today, the chamber. And today we also have a resolution to given the uniqueness of that contract to get council approved with move forward with that one. So City Hall North Space Rim is a big project. Farm buildout, that's another big one. We're seeing some signs that they are actually starting to build out our substation and all the other retail space down there that's going to be used for commercial retailers. And so according to the vintage, the last time I talked a few months back, they do have some lot of interest in those. I think it's thirty-five, thirty-six remaining spaces that they're trying to fill with kind of a business, personal use space, business use space. So we're starting to see some progress there. In the city clerk's office, some of the few things we're working on, or we have worked on in Q two is we filled three planning positions, two AMB and one civil service. The remaining, we have two remaining vacancies in our AMB board, so I'm just putting that word out there that if you know anybody that is interested in working on or volunteering on the AMB board, we still have two opening, actually. Three, I think. So we have three. That's a mistake. Another big thing in the clerk's office is the annual judicial legislative audit review committee, the state agency that local agencies are required to report to. If costs are incurred, they're over and beyond a hundred thousand dollars a year. We do qualify, so we did report on that and that is PR related. Kind of relate this to is something that we'll be adding or discussing in our legislative committee is adding this to our legislative agenda. And this is something that the legislative committee has been apprised of and this will be a discussion in the coming months to see if council would support that and clean that on there. On the police side, one of the big things that we're working on is a police policy update. We're about sixty-five percent complete on that. Our city attorney's been updated and he's keeping us moving forward on this. So that's one big project that chief, our deputy city, our deputy director of public safety is working on as well. So they've been working on that pretty diligently over the past few months. Q two, she's been moving forward with our security system. If I'm not mistaken, the equipment has been on order and we're just yet to receive that equipment. And I think that's going to be installed probably in, I'm guessing in Q three, most likely. Again, that equipment covers the Mill Creek Sports Park, the library, and City Hall North and South. So we'll have improved security in City Hall as well. In Q two, we had to offer complete a field training. The chief will give a more in-depth update on kind of where we are from the staffing level. In front of you, you probably see some staffing, some, I'm sorry, some crime statistics. And so he could speak to those as well if you have any questions. So Public Works Development Services Planning Operations, always a big area. Public Works, their growth management, planning for Q two has been vegetation management projects, focusing on Village Green Drive, Dumas Road, and the third is Seattle Hill Road coming up. And that includes a lot, taking care of all the branches that are hanging over the roads, tree trimming. I think they did some pressure washing on the railing on Dumas as well. So as I mentioned, Seattle Hill is the next. One big other piece of that project, they've been working on inspecting the irrigation systems as well with our public works supervisor, Keegan, has been investigating kind of those areas across the city where those irrigation systems have not been working. So we're kind of discussing kind of right now if those should be patched up, fixed, or should we actually do a complete replacement of those for the long term? And so you'll hear more about that in the coming months because now that we're in the summertime, it's really a good time to assess that. So another, in planning and development, one other thing that is, that's, is come up as a permit volume, it's been pretty steady over the past quarter. One big significant project that's coming in, the city of Mill Creek, is that storage facility just south of town hall, city hall here, just on the east-west side of Bothwell, the highway where that nursery is. And you'll probably see some construction going on there. So a new storage facility, and that's the big project that's coming in the city right now from the planning and development standpoint. There are some tenant buildouts also occurring across the city, the farms. As I mentioned, there's those tenant buildouts there, substations and so forth, the retail spaces. And also in Town Center, there's been some recent developments as well in some of those spaces. I did hear that there might be something coming in, just there is a Halloween store temporarily coming in in the U-Dub space, but there might be some other things developing too in that space. So I haven't heard any specifics, but I heard something might be coming in. On the planning side, as you are aware, in Q two, we had a study session with the planning commission, kind of a joint session with council to give an update and understanding to both the commission and council, kind of how the process is going to work for two thousand twenty-four. And so that was a big, big project that we kicked off, led by LVC and OTAC. GRCC project preparation, Director Todd's been pretty busy working with the stakeholders, the consultants that will be helping us on that project. And also part of that will be a community engagement piece of it, well, the community engagement piece of it where we're entering the draft stage of that. So we're starting to move forward with that. Something that's always been on the agenda lately has been stormwater. I think we'll be wrapping up all those inspections in the coming month and then that next step will be to determine if there's any of those bases need to be pumped out or repaired. So that'll be the next step. Communications and marketing. As you know, we launched our resident portal. A big project for the city. As you know, those mailers went out to all those residents. From what we're hearing, you know, it's working quite well and, you know, everybody's putting those, keeping those magnets on their refrigerators and so forth and really utilizing this portal. That one's, it's a one-stop resource for residents. We are going to incorporate this into our website. By the end of this year, we're going to have a hopefully shoot for having our website developed and revamped by then. So we're working with a company called D2 that's provided us some data and resources that will allow us to develop an RFP that will go out fairly soon. At that point, we'll hire a website development company to help us improve the existing site. We lost our two thousand twenty-three performance survey this year. As you know, we started last year. We'll provide some consistency over the next few years into the future. We didn't change that survey much, but we did address one, one key question that allows to better identify the clean, safe, and well-maintained piece of our, of our plan, which is to look at more green spaces, structures, street sidewalks. The question also covered questions about Bothwell River Highway and one thirty-second or Highway ninety-six. So but we didn't alter that, the survey much. So we'll see how that survey pans out during the, during the Mill Creek Festival, we did get a fair amount of people that did respond to that survey. So we're that will be ongoing for the rest of the year and we'll get the results then. New signage across the city. So our marketing department's been working closely with our deputy city manager, who's kind of leading the process regarding the ARPA-funded AMB collaborative effort to determine kind of what type of entryway signs are coming into all of our into our city in different areas, Bothwell, North and South, one sixty-fourths, Dumas and so forth. They're also looking at wayfinding signs. We're doing inventory across the city in different areas to figure out which ones need to be wrapped. So that process is taking, start taking place in quarter two and we'll continue that probably through the rest of the year. Finance and admin. As you know, we extended that contract per year approval to add those modules to our springbook system. We believe that the implementation will take place in Q three. ESS, fixed assets, payroll. I think part of the HR. So that's a big thing that happened in Q two. Our annual finance report went out in May for two thousand twenty-two. There is a requirement that that report has to be out within hundred fifty days from the end of the prior year. So our director of finance got that out, so we're happy about that. Something new for this year is in May, we also got notified by the state that we're going to get audited for a leasehold excise taxes. How appropriate. But this is actually for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three. So that's something that's added to her list of projects to do. On the information technology side, average amount of health tickets came in, computer refresh projects. You see all those iPads on your, on the dais. If you receive those, if you need help with those, that's the beginning of our refresh project. So all of you receive new iPads. Going forward, our IT managers working with a company to bring in Lenovo PCs and laptops. So that's another part of the process that will provide us new equipment moving forward. Another big project is a telephone upgrade. We're working on RFP now. We started actually working in Q two. That I think you've heard this in the past, we're going to be replacing our entire telephone upgrade system that will be better integrated with capabilities that will incorporate our cell phones and so forth. So we're also working on our existing global address book as well, so that updating that, make sure that's current because that's going to be integrated in with the the cell phones. I won't talk. Well, you can't virtualization. So this is a big thing, actually. In the late person's terms, what it is is basically virtual machines. So what's happening on the IT side is that Joe's been working on our IT manager is actually making our IT systems more efficient. So the virtualization is what used to be as hardware that's across systems now are virtual machines. So now he's reducing the amount of actual physical servers into a virtual basis that is managing the cloud. So everything's managed on the dashboard, if that makes sense. So and I only mention this is because it kind of gives you an example of that, that he's actually looking towards leveraging technology and moving forward and making things more efficient from an IT standpoint. I think the longer it pays off, it might be more costly at the beginning, but over time, it's easily managed by one person. On the HR side, we had a big recognition event, recognition event. As you know, you probably heard, heard that. Pretty good event. Chief White was able to award a lot of his staff based on the accomplishments they did. From a policing standpoint, we did milestones. We had two individuals, Jordy Gunderson and retired Sean Connor, who had the opportunity to receive awards for their years of service. So we appreciate that. I think over, if I remember correctly, the combination of years within the Mill Creek was probably close to three hundred eighty, I think, years of service, but it's vague to me right now. But so, so on employee side, we are including our core values in our performance evaluation forums. We'll be working towards keeping our employees updated on those evaluations moving forward. And so our HR manager, you know, we face working on that. So that's one of our priorities going forward and she started that in Q two. New employees and positions. We hired four employees in Q two. Maintenance aides, deputy city clerk and one officer. We reclassed two different positions, a marketing program manager position as well as the two of those, as well as a project engineer two. And we added two positions into ASME, into the union, a planner and a project engineer three. So we made some progress on the HR side. And our HR manager was busy creating a safety and employee recognition committee. So he did that. And with that, I'll take any questions. About any departments.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few, but I don't want to hog the microphone. So I'll start with the first one. You mentioned the consultants that you have for this next project and you also kind of alluded that they may be somehow fitted or be able to bid or rebid to a new RFQ for our strategic plan. So I'm just a little confused there.
So we will be bringing forward another batch of consultants that council will be able to listen to as a study session. They'll present why they think they're the best candidate for guiding the city in this developing our strategy, our ten to twenty, twenty, ten to twenty-five year strategy.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so we'll, we're going to review those and probably bring four to six to in September.
Okay, all right. So yeah, it was just, do we have to put that out for rebid? Is that what we do or?
Well, no.
Is there a grace period?
No, there's no, we're not bidding it out. We're just selecting. We just reached out to another group, another number of candidates, you know, consultants to see if they're interested in it. Or probably have a review process, possibly internally or to bring in four to six and then we'll let council decide on which one they select, maybe the top two.
Yeah, no, that clears it up. I'm sorry. I was just a little confused. I thought they were two different sets of consultants, but apparently they're going to, could or do both gigs, right?
Which gigs? Sorry.
The strategic plan you talked about and then what you introduced today, which you would use the consultants for, for the leadership program?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we're bringing consultants in for the leadership program. We have brought them in. We see how to execute the contract. That's for our leadership training. Now for the strategic planning for long-term plan, ten to twenty-five years. Looking at twenty-five years, let's say at the most. You remember the process that we had when we had the two consultants come in? Council wanted, advised us to go out and find more consultants to bring back, right? And so we're just bringing back.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same lines there. Thank you for clearing that up. Anybody else want to go next? I have a couple more questions. All right. So all right, we were talking about updates for space. So in Town Center, I remember there was a they were talking about a swim school going in the old Pier One Imports space. Is there any, that's a go, according to Director Todd?
Yeah, the tenant improvement on that is moving along. I don't know what their final deadline is, but they're digging a hole and making a pool.
Excellent. Excellent. I love it. All right. So next question. The leasehold excise tax audit. I don't know what that is.
It's like the equivalent to a sales tax on leases.
Okay. And is the audit just customary or is there a reason behind it?
They typically do it every few years and so they were just behind because of COVID.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. One thing interestingly found about leasehold excise tax is not necessarily taxed on only the the leases, the dollar amount of leases, but they actually look at the market value as well. So you'll come to, so you'll find, and this is something that we found out with the chamber lease actually is, although you'll, we'll explain this later, that all there's no base rent. So you'll come to, so you'll find, and this is something that we found out with the chamber lease actually is, although you'll, we'll explain this later, that all there's no base rent. There's any kind of this, this trade on it. They still look at the market rate of that. So state still wants our money, if I'm not mistaken. So that's, that's something that we found out recently. We, it was, I thought the issue to share with you, but. So it's not, it's just a coincidence that this is happening, but.
And my next question was maybe for the chief and, and maybe some other council members want to weigh in. There has been, I received numerous complaints now, and I'm sure everybody in the community has heard these vehicles, has seen these vehicles. Doing fifty, sixty, seventy of thirty fifth Bothylard Highway with those loud tailpipes. Do we have maybe some traffic emphasis in our future is, since we're talking about ARPA funds, is there an opportunity here? I know staffing may be an issue, but to partner with Lynn Woods, since funds are available, sheriff's office, whomever. To maybe kind of get this under control and start letting people know that this isn't a speedway or a thoroughfare.
Yeah, we're looking at all possibilities, but right now we're just trying to look at our staffing right now to see if there's a way that we can help. Address some of the traffic safety concerns that have been brought forward by the community. We hear the community and we hear the representatives that are here tonight. And we want to make sure that we are putting that effort forward. So we're looking in-house first to see if we can help solve the problem sooner than later. The, the agreements with other cities to come in and do emphasis here within the city would take some time to put in place.
And, and so you can also help with this. So do we have an adequate noise ordinance in place? Or perhaps one of us or all of us could craft one to maybe help with that endeavor?
The noise ordinance would not be effective for the traffic side of it, but there are other RCWs that would help us with that.
Okay, all right. I think it's high time we get creative with some of these vehicles. It, it's getting pretty nutty out there, as you know. So, all right, that's kind of all I have. I'm sorry to hog the mic. Feel free to pass the baton.
Councilmember Steckler.
Good questions, councilmember. Okay, so first of all, a comment. We've gone for years without having this kind of an update, so. I commend you on your report. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for the results that the department heads are getting. The city is moving forward and I appreciate that. Very, very much. I wanted to commend you on that. Couple of comments or questions I had, really they're about the strategic plan. I, I was a little confused here. I thought the last meeting that we had, we had six council members and we were split on these two representatives, three and three. So I thought we were going to wait until the, we had a full council again and take a vote on these two strategic players, but. Maybe the notes are, 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 I, I was confused, maybe the notes will clarify. Was a decision made in the council or after the council meeting to go ahead and open it up to other strategic. Parties to, to. Present to us. I didn't remember that at the council meeting as a, as a decision.
I, I recall the decision, do you remember?
I believe Grant had talked about there not being able to be a decision because. Council couldn't agree and I was under the impression that we were supposed to go back out. I did tell them that they are not. That they're still in the running, but that we did have some additional applicants that council could review if they wanted to.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't recall that as a decision because. Connie never got a chance, council member, never got a chance to vote. So when that happens, I thought we have to actually have a full, full council vote first before we actually go out and bring in new players, so.
If I recall correctly, I think the decision was given that it was three, three, that we would go back out and bring back. A new. Batch of consultants for you to evaluate, given the. Given the comments that were made from the presentations that occurred that day in council, because I believe that's. Given that it was tied, tied, and that's what I recall.
And I did withdraw the motion for any particular party, so I mean, so I would understand. The reason for looking at other applicants, I mean, personally.
Okay, keeping in mind the reason why we did reach out to the existing, the ones that. During that, the two that were here to present. So those. Consultants are not out of the question. They're just sitting on the sidelines now and should, council decided that that's something they wanted to do, bring them back, so. But we're bringing through a, a forward, a whole new batch of consultants, so.
Well, that's probably okay because we're not going to have a full council till September anyway to vote. That's probably going to be all, all right. I just didn't recall that. I, I did have one other item, actually, that's, that's more important regarding the strategic. Plan. And if we go back to our notes that we had in our brainstorming. As I recall, we were talking about a strategic plan for the city. I don't recall us talking about a plan that was ten or twenty years out. I seem to recall, and I'd like us to go back to the notes of, of a strategic plan for our city, it was more like three and five years out. Could, could we go back and take a look at the, the notes from the strategic planning session that we had as to how far out we, we were looking? Most strategic plans don't look out, especially for cities, twenty, 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 ten to twenty years out, because it's just too darn far. And to, to evaluate against that. So maybe we could take a look at that and reevaluate, really. How far out our strategic vision plan should be. And I, and I think even the one council, one. Company that you talked to, who has done a lot of work with cities, was pretty shocked. They'd never heard of a city going this far out on their. Strategic planning as well. And I, I know that, I think our, I, I think your deputy city manager really wants to say, make a comment, go ahead. Sorry, Laurel.
So we do have, so it looks like Bellevue Shoreline and I want to say Bothell had all done over twenty year plans. And I do have two really solid leads on people that have helped with those and possibly a few more. If that's the direction council wants to go.
I, I think from our planning session, though, we, we weren't looking at that. So we, we could, you know, regroup, talk about it again, but I believe at the planning session that we had here. It was more like a three and five year plan, because we've never had. A plan three years out or five years out that was as, as strategic and specific, so. That's something we may want to reconsider. That ten and twenty years was a surprise to me.
We had a different conversation as a council and that evolved. From the original to being the longer plan. So I think that's something that if council wants to. Revisit and decide they want to go back to a five year plan, then that can be a discussion, but that was something that had evolved in conversation and council.
Did council have this or was it a meeting outside of council?
No, council had this discussion.
So I just need to know what date that was happened and somebody could inform me and go back and look at the notes.
Yeah, this will maybe help a little bit with context. You know, every year we create a three to five year. Priorities, list goals, whatever you want to call it. We have Andrew Ballard come in past two years and. You know, set our goals, city goals and, and council goals. I think that's, to me, that's a three or five year. As a city, I think it's important to actually look forward even further, whether it be five or ten or fifteen even, at a minimum. You know, there. Right now, there's a lot of things, like you mentioned in the past, that are converging. There's a lot of things that are happening in the economy. There's a lot of things that are going to be happening with our neighboring cities. And for the deputy city manager, I had to make decisions on where we want, what we want to do moving forward, whether it pertains to grant funding. Bring in certain assets in the city, these things that are long term, that'll be five, ten, fifteen years down the road. Implement, and it's going to take some time for these things to be implemented. The Food and Farming Center, West Soish County is coming in in twenty twenty six. I think it'd be prudent of us to start thinking about what's going to happen down the road. Now, whether this is something that's going to be. Exists with our successors or not, or this plan, at least, at least I'm thinking that at least as a. As a team that we can at least establish at this point in time what we think, what the city should be. We have revenue challenges. I don't believe our existing operations are sustainable with existing revenues we have and the staffing we have. I think it's going to take more time and resources, so revenues, that's the case of that strategic plan down the road. Theory, you've been had it now, but is that a discussion that has to happen so that we can plan ten years from the road? I'm not saying it should, but I think we need to consider these and ask us these hard questions going down the road. So. Whether we talk about it or not, I think it's something that we should be talking about moving forward. About where we want to be down the, you know. Into the future, so. We did have those discussions in the past in council. We've been discussing internally as a leadership team as well, so.
I, I do recall the discussions of three, five and ten. I just didn't discuss, I don't recall a discussion of twenty, twenty five, which I've been hearing. Yeah, so if that discussion happened in council where we moved to twenty or twenty five years, I don't recall a council meeting. Somebody could just enlighten me, I'll.
I'll, I don't know if there's a discussion rather in the reference to thinking about.
But I heard that there was a council meeting where we did that. If there was, great. If there wasn't, then this is news to me. Three, five and ten, I recall.
Yeah, I think it came up in conversation in council. I don't know which one. Where Brian had, or Mayor Holzkohl had mentioned it and council kind of agreed, so I don't know which meeting that was.
Yeah, I don't recall that. So I don't recall this, I think council making a decision to go to a twenty, twenty five year plan. So if we could just have that discussion. Or enlighten me into the dates of the, of the minutes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else, councilmember Steckler?
No.
Okay, councilmember McCafflery has another question.
None other question, just, just to, if we're going to talk about that really quick. We did discuss, the staff did workshop that idea of a longer term with us, and I think we spent a better part of an hour. On the meeting roughly a month ago where we talked about extending beyond or made reference to, as the city manager said, I mean, that's, that's what I gleaned from that conversation. And the reason we were going to do this, not just because we had this wild hair, because ARPA funds existed. To be spent on this project and we could, you know, maybe try to think out of the box like the staff was trying to do. That, that was my understanding and I was supportive of that.
Anyone else have any questions? Oh, councilmember Paddock.
This is more about the, the presentation in general versus the timeframe. So I echo the appreciation for. Going through this, I think that the regularity of this cadence is good, not just for, I'm, I'm sure it's good for the. City leadership, but also for the community, for the council to kind of see what's happening and what's happened and whatnot. I, I'd. I think I'd, I'd suggest or I'd ask for, for two things. One is if for the next one, we take what was proposed here as here's what we're going to do over the next quarter. And have an update on how do we do against that? And then what's the next jump? So we can kind of see the, what got done and what needs to get done type of thing. And then I don't know if this is, would be possible for the, the next one that's coming up, but Chief White's data. Made me think about and just, you know, prior roles and doing this type of thing. If there was a set of. Kind of core success metrics for each department, and let's just say that, not, not to pick on the chief, but let's just say that, that. Staffing was a core success metric or, I don't know, permit processing backlog or. Impressions for Marcom. It would be great to have, whether it's the next quarter coming up or the one after, to say, hey. We're really looking to build impressions on the public portal and here's how we're doing, here's how we're progressing against that. Here's how the. Investment the city is making to get those impressions on that, on that portal. Or it could be, are we, you know, how are we doing as far as filling positions or burning down the backlog of permits and whatnot? It would, I'd like to see the city mature into that type of ability to, to report on things. I might be alone in that, but I'd love to see that.
We share some consistency across, one of the things that happens throughout the budget process is. As we put together a budget book, one of the key components of that are KPIs. So maybe that's how we incorporate this rather than a separate set of measures, but I'll defer to the finance director in the, at the city manager on that. But, but I hear your concerns and I think we'll consider that as.
And please, no concern, no, no concern at least, but the, the, no, it was simply building upon, I think what's. Really healthy for the city to continue to do and add another dimension of. What's the data that's telling us we're continuing to move down the right path? It's no concern whatsoever. It's actually just building on, I think what's really been really good. Yeah.
Councilmember Steckler has another question.
Just one more quick question I had when you were talking about the rent up of City Hall North. There's a certain amount of, of, of office space over there that will continue to be made available to the. Citizens and organizations that will not be rented up. Am I correcting that assumption? Or are we looking at renting all space over City Hall North?
I, I think if we directly fill the spaces that kind of working on now with potential clients, we may have eight hundred square feet left. Office space, so will there be extra space? We have rooms that we have. That are not leased and then we have rooms that could be used as. Conference room, board meeting rooms, so there's not much space left once we, so there might be.
I know that right now we are rent, we are making certain. Space available to su- certain community organizations to use for meeting space.
Oh, so we do have room two oh one, which is a training room, that Chief White put together.
Right, and then on the first, first floor, we have a large L-shaped meeting room that some community organizations use.
Well, that's correct. We have.
So we, we do have some, yeah, some, no, just community meeting space will continue to be made available to.
Yeah, that, that is, we have those meeting rooms on, on the, on the first floor.
Second floor, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. City manager?
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll hand this over to our finance director for the Q two financial report.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Trying that too. Well, good evening, Mayor Proten, councilmembers, staff and to our audience in the council chamber as well as those joining us virtually. So before we, before I talk about the financial and our investment report or status as of quarter. Two of twenty twenty three, I'd like to first go over the. Okay, I have control. Thank you. Go over the economic environment during the past six, six months. So the consumer price index, the twelve month. Change, this graph that you're seeing represents the January twenty nineteen through June of twenty twenty three. CPI, the blue line represents the US national average and the dots are the. The red dots are the Seattle metro area, twelve month average. And so this depicts that during COVID. We had our CPI under two or three percent. And as we started to reopen, the CPI prices start to go up with the. With the peak at about nine percent and ten percent and the national and then. In the Seattle area during June of twenty twenty two, and we can see that this is because of the. Logistics and this, and the. Supply chain issues that we've been having as well as the war of Russia and Ukraine. And now, starting in January of twenty twenty three, we see those prices drop. And continue to do so. And in fact, as of June twenty twenty three, the US national average now is at three point one. And Seattle still trends higher at four point six percent. Now, the. The components of the index is, are a lot, includes a lot of variable. And so all items, less food and energy have gone up by four point eight percent over the year. The food went up by five point seven, but the energy prices have gone down six point seven percent. However, maybe some of you are going to ask, well, how come I don't see it, see that in the gas pump? Next slide, please. Thank you. And so this is the, the graph of the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty three gasoline. Prices per ga- per gallon at the, at the pump. And so US averages at in, in June of twenty twenty two, it was at five point one. Five dollar and fourteen cents, whereas Seattle is at five point sixty. Five point one, five dollar and fourteen cents, whereas Seattle is at five point sixty-seven. Come June, June of twenty twenty-three, we are, the national is at three point eight one. We are still at five. Washington is one of the highest right now. In prices for gasoline, and that's primarily because. Starting January twenty twenty-three, recall that we adopted or we implemented the Climate. Commitment Act. And in order for us to hit the marks for twenty twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five and twenty fifty. We started now to. Allow or provide allowances to the refineries. And so those, the price of that allowance is now passed on to the consumers. And that price is about ten percent difference. That's why we're our gas prices are really high. Next slide, please. And so now looking at the unemployment rate for January twenty twenty-three, again, the graph right here is from June of twenty nineteen. Through June of twenty twenty-three, the red is the Washington state, the blue is the national average. And then the Seattle is the the green dash marks. And so again, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, during COVID, we experienced a high unemployment rate. And that has started to come down, which is good. And now it's further improved. The national average is is at three point six. And the Washington state is at three point eight. Next slide, please. And now what does the federal funds rate? How did that affect us? Or what? So the so as a reminder, the federal funds rate is the cost of money. And that is the, and it is a policy that's implemented by the Federal Open Market Committee. Who sets the policy, the monetary policy, so they can manage the the economy. Based up of what's happening out there. And so in response to COVID, the cost of money was very low. And then as we started to experience the high inflation rate. The federal open market has started to react by increasing the cost of of dollars from steadily. Starting in May of twenty twenty-two to now, we are at five to five and a quarter. And today and tomorrow, the committee will be needing to either set the rate at the same. Percent or they may increase it. We don't know yet. That will come out tomorrow around two PM Eastern Standard Time. But because the cost of money or the federal funds rate is now at five, it has affected the prices of homes. And so it has slowed down the 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 home sales have slowed except. Our except multifamily activity, the construction in that area has continued to grow. And so in the Seattle area, because again of the higher. Federal funds rate, the. Seattle home prices have remained twelve point five percent below the prices from twelve months ago. And so the federal funds rate be expected to stay at a still inflated rate. Until the inflation is around two percent and. The employment is at maximum. Okay, so moving on to our next slide, please. To our general fund, our general fund revenues was greater, our collection was greater than our expenditures by seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Next slide, please. And so for this quarter through six months, we are, our benchmark is at twenty-five percent. Our total revenue, six point two is above that benchmark at twenty-six point four. We have majority of most of our revenue sources except for licenses and permits. Charges for goods and services and fines and penalties are below that. Benchmark. Our regular and EMS property taxes is at twenty-six point nine percent. That represents about half of our twenty twenty-three levy. And then our sales tax at about twenty-six point three percent. Next slide, please. The regular sales tax comparing it annual to annual twenty twenty-two, we have received sixty-six. About sixty-six thousand dollars more than the prior year or three point five percent with retail trade and miscellaneous being the highest. Performing categories. Next slide, please. Quarter over quarter. For quarter two of twenty twenty-three, we recollected about twenty-two thousand dollars more or two point eight nine percent. With the highest categories being still retail, excuse me, accommodation and food services as well as miscellaneous. The finance and insurance have gone. Down significantly, and that's because of payment corrections. Next slide, please. The other general fund sources are intergovernmental revenues are at thirty-two point one percent. The intergovernmental revenues include our collection, our annual collection for the PUD privilege tax. Now, the PUD privilege tax is in lieu of property taxes, public utility districts pay eight-two percent. Of their gross revenue plus point zero two per kilowatt of their self-generated. Retail or wholesale sale of of their. Electricity. And at the same time, we also received our quarter two of our share of the liquor tax board profit, which is about forty-one thousand. And that's equivalent to the two percent license fee and we get our share on a per capita basis. And then our next, the highest of our revenue sources is our is the miscellaneous revenue, which includes the. Investment returns that we have or excess cash. We've earned ma- majority of it from LGIP, which. Gave us a five point two percent return versus a one point zero two percent from twenty twenty-two. Again, this is reflective of the federal funds rate because they generally follow what but that trend line is. Now, the at the. The overages from our intergovernmental revenues and our miscellaneous revenues have. They they are more than enough to offset the shortfalls in the three categories that I mentioned in license and permits. Charges for goods and services as well as our fines and penalties. Next slide, please. Moving on to the general fund expenditures, we are at five point four million dollars or twenty, under twenty-five, under the benchmark of twenty-five percent. And majority of the. Departments are under that benchmark, except of course for information technology and non-departmental. And as I've mentioned before, that's because of the annual payments that we've already paid at the beginning of the year. Overall, the five point four million comprises of our salary and benefits. We have six months worth. That's about. In actual, it's about three point four million. If we were fully. If all vacancies were filled, our salary and benefits should have been about a three point nine. So we have some savings there, but that savings is. Is decreased by overtime from public safety because of their. The number of vacancies that they have, of course, to keep our streets safe, we have to have those overtime. We also have our contract services at one point three million, which and then our legal services is about four hundred and sixty thousand. And the balance of that would be M and O. Next slide, please. Again, this is our. See wide legal expenses. So we have four hundred and fifty-six thousand here. As of June, which includes services through May, we are a little over the benchmark at twenty-eight percent here. But we are still staff still managing that expense to make sure that we don't, we still we that we stay within budget. Um, next slide, please. Okay, um, so there are no notable or significant issues with any of our special revenue funds. Our debt service nor our capital projects, except that I just wanted to point out that our REIT. Fund is still lagging. Our year-to-date REIT receipts is about four hundred and forty thousand or twelve percent of what we budgeted for the year. And and the balance of that revenue of five hundred and sixty-five is the the share of the investment return. Of the fund. And so we will continue, of course, to monitor REIT and adjust accordingly during mid-year.
Is the lagging behind of REIT, is that just because of lower home sales?
Yeah. Next slide, please. Now, moving on to our investment report for quarter two, again, I just wanted to remind people about the policy that. Our guide for our investments. And so policy CD policy three hundred dot zero five provides, you know, the guidelines, which includes the objectives. Which are safe, we have to be invested in liquid, liquid investments, and then we should have really good return on investment. It also talked about the authorized investments that we could put our excess funds in, that would include the. State investment pool, US Treasury agency obligations, any general general obligation bonds. Also, it requires that any securities that we hold, a custodian, a third-party custodian holds that. And the percentage of diversification for any investments that we have. And so we are allowed to put one hundred percent of our investments. With the state pool. Alternatively, we could put it one hundred percent to US Treasuries. And of course, the reporting, which is required at least every quarter. Okay, last slide, promise. Okay, so our excess cash, eighty-seven point five percent of that we have invested in the pool. That's about thirty-five million and year-to-date, we have received seven hundred ninety-one thousand. And that's re- rolled into the into the pool. And over the six-month average, we have earned about four point three percent versus point forty-two percent in the prior year. And then our US Treasury and US Obligation comprises of about twelve point five percent or five million dollars. And year-to-date, we've received thirty-seven thousand. That's equivalent to one point six percent. And that interest is usually transmitted to us to our main checking account to support operations. We don't have any maturities or we, and I didn't buy any new investments for quarter two. So. Everything is still at five million there. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Ar- Armina. Councilmember Allison has a question.
Yeah, when your charts showed Seattle, I think the first one said the Seattle metro area, did they all apply to the Seattle metro area? And what does that encompass?
Either the CPI?
Yeah, well, you had a few trend charts that showed the Seattle area or.
Slide one, slide two, please.
Yeah, so that one says Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue. And then there were some other plotted lines. There were some.
So.
Yeah, that one right there, is that the same area?
This trend line is our unemployment rate.
Okay.
Is was this the one that you were talking about?
Yeah, so when it says Seattle on it, is that the metro area or? So it's the Seattle Bellevue, it's that same region. Okay, okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Stokler.
So the only area that I saw in this report that caused me any concerns, and I'm going to kind of direct this to the to the chief. And I may even ask, you may want to ask me to hold on answering this question till you go over your report. Is the fines and penalties, right, which is at eleven percent instead of twenty-five percent. It it's down significantly against the goal. And I know that your traffic counts are. Are up, but the the question is, how are we doing against issuing tickets and fines and. Penalties and 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 such and collecting revenue. I don't know if you want to address that now or if you want to ask me to hold my question until you actually go over your report. What do you? What do you say?
Happy to answer.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Somewhat now. Yeah, I do believe that this is part of what we're seeing here is just the issues with staffing. We've had over the last three years, an ebb and flow of officers leaving the agency as well as hiring officers. So. It's really affected how we have the ability and how much. Time we have that's not directed towards calls for service. So right now, we're functioning on this skeleton crew. On most shifts. Sorry about that. And so what we're trying to do is figure out how we can address that issue. The traffic contacts are increasing. But we're really looking for the quality of enforcement versus the quantity of enforcement. And we want to make sure that we're letting officers use their discretion to educate the community. As well as taking the opportunity to enforce the laws when that's the priority. So it is a it's a balance. And so. We are hearing what the community is telling us. We're looking at other ways to address fines and fees. But in regards to that specific line, I think the staffing issue is the major contributor to it being as low as it is.
Yeah, and it has been an issue for us, you know. And on a consistent basis, quarter after quarter. So is there anything that we can do to help you with this, to get us back to the. Levels that we were at in years past? I mean, your traffic counts are there. That's not the issue. You're 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 pulling people over. And I mean, you're at a, as you can see, your traffic counts year-to-date are up significantly. And even though we're. Underperforming against the goal, the goal was was a reduced goal because we were concerned about traffic counts. And still we're not hitting the reduced goal. So there must be something else. Is there anything else that we could be doing or to have the officers? You know, go back to a more enforcement level that they had in years past.
I think the council is doing exactly what I need them to do, and that's support the hiring of new officers. And once we get up to full staff, I think that this will be remedied to a certain extent.
Okay. So at this, at this point, the we really should look at readjusting that 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 note. We're not going to, chances of getting up to that level is not going to happen this year.
I I would say, well, this is a biennium, right? So I would say that this year is it's very difficult.
Yeah.
So but we'll be looking at. How we can move forward in the next half of the biennium and see where we can, what numbers we can produce.
Okay, so for this year, maybe not, but yet next year, a little more confidence in hitting the hitting the target.
Hope hoping so.
Okay.
Councilmember Dukay.
Hi, thanks for peeking around. So my question for you is, I I really, there's two things. One, I would appreciate for future reports and and. Presentations, if we could include, because I think there's a, if we could include more, this is going to sound weird, pie charts. But more specifically to talk about like where we are as a whole and and where and where our funding is going. I think back to when we were working on our fire annexation. And there we had really good graphs on understanding like big picture about how much was being spent and things like that. And. I I think those kind of visuals are helpful, especially as as these things are shared with the public. So just, you know, recommendations for for. For how how best that they will fit. Obviously, not a pie chart that doesn't make any sense, but in terms of when you're trying to tell the story. About what we're where we are currently. And specifically, I'm assuming that you have projections for where we should be hitting each quarter, right? And that's how you built upon whether we're, you you have the overall biennium, but then within to build it, you had to have. Projections for each of the quarters of where we think we would be. Is that correct?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so for the first six months, we didn't have that. We are developing that in this next six months. Because we will be doing the biennium budget exercise. And so that's more significant at this time. So quarter, I would expect quarter three, ending quarter three, you will hear more on the projection side of things as opposed to actual. So yeah.
Incredibly helpful. I really appreciate that because I think there's something to when you're presenting along with, you know, Councilmember Stokler, you know. Shared in general when it comes to these numbers. It's good to see where we are compared to where we anticipated we were going to be and then looking forward to. Where we actually were. And so thank you for that. So that's good to know.
But also as as just for information, although we, I am not presenting the graphs here, it's part of the packet. I want to say it actually, it it provides projection on the revenue side as well as. Each sources, there is a graph that's attached to the packet.
Fantastic. Thank you. It's it's about in the presentation, whether or not it's a graph or not, but just saying like we were. Because you did do that in this presentation. You said where we, where we were actual, we're supposed, you know, we're here, this is the biennium. All of that was a great, but I'd love to know what. Works in this opportunity to also talk about what we're projecting for the next quarter as part of where we are now. It's a little bit of that, like this is where we are, this is where we've been, but also now. It's a little bit of that, like this is where we are, this is where we've been, but also now look forward. I think in our past presentation with, that just the one that just finished with our our city manager. I think that's what councilmember Paddock was alluding to about having that data about here and then thinking through. So just constantly, as we're building out these presentations to think through, we also want to end the report with, and this is where we'll 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 be going in the next quarter. So I think that would be helpful, and this was fantastic, I really appreciate your time and making it something for those of us who are not in finance to be able to follow along and review before our meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a question. Actually, it's more of a comment with a question, and I apologize that yesterday I was really jet-lagged during our finance meeting and didn't think to ask it then. But I would be curious to know, as we're talking about the fines being lower, that number being lower. I'm curious, I know I've been seeing in the in our expense reports, when we're reviewing those, I'm seeing that we're paying court fees for people getting their tickets. I'm curious if they went up and if that's affecting our balance that we're getting as well, so I would just be interested in just checking on that to see if maybe as we're doing the budget, if we're paying more to go to court now than we used to, and that's affecting the overall number of what's coming in. Just just a thought there. Yeah, I didn't think about it yesterday because I wasn't fully with it. But yeah, I'd be curious to know that, because I know I'm seeing that we're paying court fees. So I I'm just curious if it's more and that's affecting that number, so that's all I've got. So anybody else have any questions? No, thank you, I mean, that was a great report, thank you for doing all that hard work and making it so easy for us to understand. All right, now moving on to new business. Resolution regarding the Mill Creek Chambers lease agreement with city manager Martin Amamoto.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One of the key parts of our success moving forward, I think, is the partnerships that we develop moving into the future. City Mill Creek, as we all know, are limited from a capacity standpoint. One of those partners is a Chamber of Commerce. As you know, the city of Mill Creek does not have an economic development department or even staff to represent or help us moving forward in terms of how we work with or how we connect with our local businesses, all businesses across City Mill Creek. We have the opportunity to work more closely with the chamber, not just from a business standpoint, but also physically. Right now, we're bringing forward a contract, a resolution to bring in the Chamber of Commerce as a less see in our City Hall North building. And the key fact, some of the key facts on this lease agreement is, one, is that there will be zero base rent. The chamber will be paying for leasehold excise taxes as well as triple net, although the agreement for, the agreement is for thirty-six months with a one-year extension lease on that agreement. Some of the provisions that are in there as it relates to the in-kind in lieu of zero base rent, you'll find those in your packet if you haven't already read them. And you can let me know if you have any questions, some of the key parts of that is working with a chamber in the capacity that they also understand that the city is interested not just in chamber members, but also all businesses across the city of Mill Creek. The chamber will be also staffing a visitor center to their capacity, approximately three hours a day, Monday through Friday. Some other key provisions there is that they will also assist the city with economic development outreach and initiatives. They will provide us also with a community member membership level at seven hundred fifty dollars per year. They will, of course, host the annual Mill Creek Festival. We will move to work with the chamber also to maintain a list of Mill Creek businesses. The city is interested in finding out all business owners across City Mill Creek, not just the retail storefronts. And then some of these may add value to our efforts moving forward if the chamber also can add some idea of the type of businesses that are across the city. And again, not those storefronts. Another big thing is, the city is always receiving information from our county, state, and federal agencies that we either connect with or we do business with. And for example, there are programs that come through that are communicated to the city. The city will continue to forward those programs, the business-related programs to the chamber, who will also transfer that information in any anything necessary to their business network. So it's a way to communicate to those businesses through the City Mill Creek as well. There's also some of the provisions and if with that, I'll take any questions. The actual proposed motion is in your agenda summary to regarding the approval of that contract.
All right, who has a question? I'm waiting for them to light up there, I know there's some questions. Okay, woo, they lit up, okay, first I have councilmember Cavallari.
Thanks, Mayor. I've looked over this agreement and I'm not an expert, but seems pretty straightforward. I've been a fan of doing something like this and partnering with a chamber. I think every healthy city has a vibrant Chamber of Commerce right behind it. One of the questions I did have that I didn't see addressed, so let's say there's money that's available for a Chamber of Commerce grant. How does that work out? What are the specifics? Does the city conduct it? Does the chamber conduct duties like that for for additional funding, outside funding?
Can you be more specific of the type of grant they're referring to?
Like, like I've seen Chamber of Commerce grants before, so I mean, I'm just just curious as to it 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 doesn't even have to be answered now, I support it, let's let's skip the question.
That would depend on the type of grants that come in, so, yeah.
I was just curious, who is the staff dedicated time to it or?
It'd probably be the, well, if they're if they're chamber grants, and it's possible the staff could dedicate some time, that would depend probably on the situation. But I believe the chamber typically executes their own grants, but, yeah.
Excellent, thanks, I'm for it, I encourage everybody to be for it, good idea, thanks, bringing it forward.
Councilmember Paddock.
Hey, Martin, could you talk a little bit more about what it means? I saw it in the packet to develop and maintain the list of the businesses in Mill Creek. Who who from the city is gonna own that that work and make sure that that gets done in collaboration with the chamber? Who owns that?
We haven't discussed that yet in terms of, you know, when we would start that and who would take on that project. I would, currently, we're working on developing a list of HOA representatives. And so that's clerk's office in conjunction with probably executive office as well, so and marketing might have some play in that, but we have not discussed that yet, it's like, yeah, so. I'm thinking the clerk's office at this point in time, but that depends on our capacity level as well.
Okay. So that's, at this point, at least a little aspirational.
It is, but I think if working with the chamber would depend on their capacity as well. And but I think it's a well-deserved effort that we need to make.
Yeah.
To develop a list now. We did some research last year, a marketing department, and there are approximately three thousand business license in the city of Mill Creek. Of course, probably four to five hundred of those retail businesses, but we have some information to start on. It may be aspirational, but I think it's a good, good, good way to head in that direction. So we have an idea of how the chamber and the city can not only build from a business standpoint, but how can we get education in these businesses as well? So and then they could be potential business chamber members as well, some of these businesses, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the first city councilman, city council meetings, I had listened into, Director Todd had talked about how tough it is to get that list, but there's there's sales tax gold in them, our hills, that's that's worth going after. So that those, that was my terminology, not Director Todd's. The other question I had is, as a member, at the city as a member, would we as council members with staff have rights as individuals to participate in the luncheon learns and that type of thing, or how does that reflect?
No, I'm not sure the.
I'm seeing a nod, so I'm gonna take that as a yes. Let's make sure that that is noted on the minutes, Adrian, nod by chair. Thank you. And again, for it as well.
Councilmember Stekler.
Okay, I'm gonna watch, I'm gonna watch for the nod as well on my question. I I also want to echo councilmember Cavallari's comments. I believe in a strong relationship with our chamber, so I wholeheartedly support this. I I think this is excellent, one of the things I I really like here is a visitor center. I I really like that a lot, I think there's a great value in that. I understand there's probably some limitations why it can only be staffed for three hours a day. But there is quite possibly the opportunity to have it staffed longer with volunteers if the chamber would be open to that. Because I think if we could get volunteers to staff it, we could promote it more, and it could be a great value to our city to have a visitor center that is staffed more like maybe five to eight hours a day. If 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 there's no problem with that from the chamber standpoint, I I don't think there would be. So I would like to see that that be added into there, that we, the chamber would agree to staff at three hours a day, but would be open to having us put put some of our volunteer groups, maybe Barb Heidel will shake her head up and down that she could find some volunteers. Yeah, I see her shaking her head up and down saying absolutely, wholeheartedly she agrees that we could find volunteers to come in. Yeah, see, she's she's so happy, she just can't wait to get off her bed and come out here and help us get to get that done. So I I think we could put that in there that we we would be able to increase it even more. That is a great value to our city to have a visitor center that we could promote, thank you.
I've been pinged that we need to have a motion and a second to have this discussion. Is that even if we're just asking questions, or is that just because the the we're kind of evolving from questions here? So so that we can have this conversation properly, since it's evolving, could I please have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Press the button. Stephanie, I press the button.
I know, but I do it.
To do them, to to.
Oh, okay, Melissa, press the button to do so, so councilmember two K.
I I move to authorize the city manager to execute a lease with the Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce for space in City Hall North.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, I have a discussion, if nobody else has a discussion, because I didn't get to ask my question. So I have a question, which is possibly even for grant, because I read through, maybe I'm missing it. But I'm curious, what are what are like the lease break consequences, like say, two years in, the city decides that we have somebody that could pay quite a bit for the space and we're in financial trouble and we need to be bringing in more money. And is there something in there, how would that look?
There there is a termination provision, and I believe it's a hundred and eighty days notice, but I'd have to double-check it in that we have it in the packet.
Okay, I just overlooked it, I think, because I looked through it, but I am jet-lagged, so I missed it, so I apologize. But thank you for answering that grant, that was my only question I had, so. All right, I have a motion and a second then, any more discussion? All those in favor? Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. All right, now we will move on to new business B, and that is the resolution on Sunset Lane property cleanup. And Mike Todd is going to lead us in that discussion.
Now I'm on, there we go, thanks. Thank you, so Sunset Lane. Next slide, please, Adrian. So Sunset Lane is a neighborhood that was planted in nineteen ninety-four under Snohomish County rules. It was annexed into the city in two thousand and five, those houses are on thirty-seven lots, thirty-six of them were built in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five when it was planted. One of them is quite a bit older, nineteen sixty-something house. Part of that plating was four tracts, three of those are for wetland buffers that are native growth protection areas, and one of them is a stormwater pond. The common area tracks are owned by all thirty-seven owners in common with equal and undivided interest. And that's a key point, I'll say it several times tonight, that's the trick, they don't have a homeowners association or other managing body for this. If you look at their deeds, they each own a one-thirty-seventh interest in these four common parcels, unvited and equal interests. Next slide, please. Gives you a flavor for what Sunset Lane is like and how it looks, there's the in yellow where the four tracks, nine, nine, six, seven, eight, and nine. Next slide, please. Let's give you a little bit better flavor for where this is, so it's right next to the Thomas Lake Shopping Center, right off of one hundred thirty-second is on the north. The Meadows shop, Meadows Housing is off to the right. Thomas Lake Shopping Center is there, and the blue line is around the Sunset Lane neighborhood. So you can see those four parcels are kind of spread out, as is the entire neighborhood. Next slide. So if you look at the plat details, it's what the plat looks like, if you look at all the fine print, there is lots going through seven, one through thirty-seven have equal and undivided interest in those tracts. Three of them are for open growth or native growth protection areas, and one of them is for the stormwater. And then down below, it's the restriction, you see a lot of lot of plaques, the native growth protection areas are, you're not allowed to take the vegetation unless it's dead dangerous or or hazardous in some fashion. So that's kind of the base condition, so next slide, please. We are all dealing with society in general around unauthorized encampments, and it's increasingly an issue for us and for other cities. It presents all kinds of public health and safety challenges, and you recently have talked about this on the public side. You've made some some changes in that and some ordinances. Principally, there was the ordinance for encampments on public property, we've been using it a couple of times, so we, on public property, we have a way to vacate people and then clean those up. Another kind of related ordinance out there recently you put together was abandoned shopping carts. So we're trying to deal with this issue of the artifacts of unauthorized encampments and people doing things that we're not really neat and tidy in our community. On the private side, Mill Creek Municipal Code seventeen twenty-four has been in place for a long time. And it generally says, everybody with private property are to keep their properties free and clear of litter and debris. So it's all of us are keeping our neat, our houses neat and nice. The city, if it turns out if we don't do that, we go through a series of letters with people, would you please clean up? That's our code enforcement opportunity, if there's a bunch of trash in your property, you've got cars in your driveway, those kinds of things we do a lot when those get reported to us. It turns out that if you get to the point where that is not happening, the city can direct the property owners to clean it up, specifically to clean it up at another levels. We'll talk about that in a minute. And that bullet, the last bullet there should be out to the left entirely, but remember too, that the city can trespass unauthorized persons. So you as an individual property owner, you need to put in an advanced trespass, an advanced no trespass order with the police department that said, hey, if I call nobody else is allowed to be on my property, would you please trespass them out of out of the location? This is a little bit tougher again because there's multiple owners, but that's something that the city always has the right to, has the ability to help you as an individual property owner with trespassing somebody. Next slide. So late twenty twenty-one, some of the residents that were close to one of these tracks, track nine-nine-eight and then also some passersbyers walking through the back lot of the Thomas Lake Shopping Center said, I think there's some homeless folks living back there, there's some bad stuff, fence is broken. Looks like some shady characters are going in and out of that area. We talked to some of those folks in twenty twenty-one. The ones that are close to track nine-nine-eight have tried to reorganize the neighborhood, they've reached out, there've been little groups have tried to reach out in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three. Throughout this period of time, the police department has helped with monitoring and encouraging trespassers to leave, but fundamentally all thirty-seven people have not said, do something about this. So that's, again, comes back to that issue of one-thirty-seventh equal and undivided interest. Hard to get an advanced no trespass order where all thirty-seven people agree to do that. And so that's part of the challenge we've got that's going on here. Ultimately, like all thirty-seven homeowners to share in those cleanup efforts, you'd like them to share in ongoing management of this, so once you fix it, it doesn't come back. And to date, we're less than half of the people have been significantly engaged. And to date, we're less than half of the people have been significantly engaged. Looked in the next slide again for me, and we'll go back to that first one. So remember this long narrow neighborhood, track nine, nine, eight is the one on upper right. And you can see a lot of these folks don't ever and down on the bottom of this is Silver Crest Drive where people enter the neighborhood. So most of these people who live there don't even drive up that direction. So it's kind of out of out of mind, outside out of mind for a lot of folks, I think. So I can picture in that neighborhood, you go knocking on doors, you send letters, hey, we got a problem. I don't think all thirty-seven people are really engaged with it. So that's been kind of the challenge. Police Department has reached out and worked with a lot of folks, but it's gotten pretty bad. Next slide. That oval is showing uh, the area where the homeless encampments are. Um, there is no one living there right now, but there's evidence lots of people have been in there and where Adrian is waving the uh, the arrow there, that is the back. Remember, that's the back of the right eight, and there's a daycare over there. There's a fence right along that yellow line in the middle of the screen. And that fence is where people are encroaching and in in that area. Uh, next slide. So there's a fence, says no trespassing signs on it. You can see it's a fence that was built in nineteen ninety-four when they plotted the neighborhood. Some wood still there. You can see that over the right, there's kind of some chain link fence. I think various parties over the years have decided they would try to maintain that fence, but you can see on the bottom there, that's the typical, a section or two has fallen down. Next slide. And here's a little bit of trash, and you can look at that and go like, maybe I could clean that up. And you go look at the next slide and you go, it gets a little tougher to clean up. Next slide. And this is as of last week. It's not a very pleasant place to be. So this is a significant effort to clean up. So you can imagine, when we talk to these homeowners about cleaning it up, number one, their concern for their safety because our people living in this area are coming and going. You can see there's a lot of trash there. There's things that are not living related. They're you know, taking stuff apart and doing some bad things. There's probably a drug paraphernalia in there. I didn't not step anybody can see out. That's about as far as I care to walk to take the pictures. So the issue is, how do we help them? Come together and trespass homeless folks out of this area, but then how do we also help them clean it up? Next slide. So what we did, and some of you were in council time, you remember, may remember some of these citizens that first came to us in late twenty twenty-one came to us, I think it was early twenty twenty-two, came to the microphone. And so about July twenty twenty-two, a couple of them came, we had a meeting back here with them, city manager, police chief, couple of us and a couple of those concerned residents, really trying to figure out how do we address this problem? Out of that, we decided in September twenty twenty-two, the chief and some of his folks went sent letters to everybody and invited them to come to a a community meeting that I think was right here, wasn't it, Chief? And the idea was kind of a neighborhood block watch. Let's get together and talk about this. How do we get people to sign up for non trespass orders? How do we work on the cleanup? Not so much focus on the cleanup, but how do we get the homeless folks out of there? Because there's a lot of concern at the time. There's still homeless people coming and going. I think since that time, that's kind of kind of gone away. But that meeting uh, that was by letter, we sent a letter in in September twenty twenty-two, meeting was in the middle of October uh, October thirteenth, I think. And Stan had a list of that, you know, it was about ten owners that attended, more people than that attended, but it could have been a husband and wife or two partners for some of those houses. So about ten people, so ten out of the thirty-seven is all that came to that meeting. Uh, we've continued to work with those folks. PD's been continuing to work with them, but they get reports. There's somebody out there. We don't have officially, I don't think they officially could trespass somebody. I'm looking to stand, but he can go in and kind of encourage people to move along. And I think you've been pretty successful. Go ahead, Stan.
We've we've had some success back there as just asking people to move along. The spaces kind of degraded to a point where individuals experience a homelessness are not stopping there either anymore. And but I did have a discussion with one of the homeowners up in the Sunset Lane neighborhood today. They've uh, managed to obtain a quite a few advanced trespass notices. We're having a meeting tomorrow for me to collect those and see where we can go from there with the advice of the city attorney as well. But it's it's they are reaching out a little bit more, and we're having some success there. Yeah.
The next bullet there is we did send in a very official letter uh, on January, June sixteenth that required cleanup by June thirtieth. So now we're getting back into our code. What can you do under seventeen twenty-four? Weekend Sunday letter says you have to clean it up. So we sent that letter. It was a two-page letter. There was a nice intro from Martin and a here's all the codes from Grant and together was a partnership on how what it is. It's a pretty dense letter, but it says, here's what you gotta do and why you gotta do it. So that is the notice that was sent. Got a few more. That's what I think we're staying on a little bit more interest in recent. People are trying to respond to that. The directions were give us a call. We'd like to help. Here's what you can do to help. But we still don't have everybody stepping up to fix this. So the next step is that we will, this council resolution we want to talk about tonight. So let's put it up there, Adrian, for the next slide. So the code provision in seventeen twenty-four oh three oh C dot two authorizes you to adopt a resolution containing the same material provision, the same material provisions as set forth in that notice that requires immediate correction of the condition. And if it's not corrected within a time limit set by your resolution, the city can take any action required or necessary to correct the condition and charge the property owners. So there's kind of a safety valve in our code that staff can't just decide to do this. Because this is going to become a charge on those thirty-seven people. And it could have been leaning against their property, or at least an invoice they're going to get in the mail, and maybe not all thirty-seven are really still still tied into it. So that's why this is a fairly serious thing we're doing. It's it's in the code. It's the right way to go. But that's why I bring it to you tonight. So next slide. So the next steps tonight, you would talk about that and decide to adopt the resolution. Uh, if you adopt it, then the city would send that resolution in the next couple of days, a letter that explains it, but also the resolution itself is required. Goes to all owners owners directing them to clean it up. We're going to give them another, by code, we have to give them five days. We're proposing August fourteenth, which gives them a couple of weeks sort of thing. If it's not cleaned up, the city will go in and clean it up and will charge all thirty-seven property owners. Next slide. So it's question time. Or comment time? I have quite
Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, are any of those properties being rented by someone? Have we engaged all the actual property owners?
So the letters go to the property tax, the the property owners record or the tax records. And some of those letters got mailed to other places because some of them are probably rented. I don't know if you've got a flavor, Stan, for how many renters you've talked talked to versus owners. I think typically owners come out, renters just don't pay much attention, my my experience.
We started off by sending the letters to the residences themselves. And when we sent those off, we received one letter returned. Um, so we're assuming that the majority of them were received by either the renters or the actual property owners. And we have yet to receive very little response from, you know, there's more than likely a few renters there. But even the property owners have had very little response with the city.
Okay, and you'll you're going to be collecting some more letters of cooperation? Would you say like twenty-two that you expect to collect?
So I was informed that there was twenty plus advanced trespass requests that that will address the individuals trespassing on the property.
Right.
But that will not address the cleanup of the property that's already been uh, has the debris there.
Okay.
It I should have explained. So when you look at the property tax records, you've got the residence address, and you've also got the owner's address. So we'll probably send the letter to both places. Sometimes sometimes it's the same person. We'll send it to both places. So we're going to send more than thirty-seven letters. So that the renter might get a chance and the owner will get a chance so that everybody's informed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cavalieri.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to take corrective action to remedy the conditions of the common parcel and to charge the Sunset Lane property owners all of the cleanup costs incurred by the city.
Um, I still had a couple things up, but if they are only going to ask questions, do we need to um, ask the questions first before we move?
So Mayor, um, Mayor Protem, if we could get us, if there would be a second to Councilmember Cavalieri's motion, then there would be opportunity for discussion.
I'll second it.
Perfect. I have a motion in a second. And I guess we will continue on this discussion. Um, oh, man, and everybody started relighting their things. Um, Councilmember Duque. Is next?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, I want to say that um, I'm really appreciative uh, that we're moving forward with doing something because it has been since twenty twenty-one. Um, and it is twenty twenty-three. Um, they did come to us in May. Um, uh, here to city council to speak. These happen to be, I mean, they're all of our neighbors, of course, because we're all Mill Creek residents. But they are physically my neighbors. Um, and it's been um, an issue that um, I have been trying to work with because not only is this um, encampment area right next to a daycare, um, but it's also, you know, in in view of families um, who are seeing um, all sorts of things, all all sorts of hours. And um, it's for me disappointing that we're now just doing something like this. Um, I had a feeling it was going to be this complicated based off of wonderful conversations with our city manager and with our chief and even with our public works director. So I understood that. Um, my problem is I actually don't like the resolution how it's written. It makes it seem like they've done nothing. That they're not the ones who the residents themselves are not the ones who reached out to us after hearing about the fence and saying um, you know, there there is, the presentation comes across very differently than the way the resolution is written. So I would like there to be changes um, to the resolution specifically. There's a couple whereas points because it feels very much like they've done that they're not trying the neighbors. There are complications that our public works director has said about getting hold of people. But even I was looking back at my notes and I looked at the letter that was sent, um, because I I do want to share, and I think I've shared this with many. I was, I I helped put up those no trespassing signs that you saw on the fence. I did door knock on every single person's house with um, a group of the um, homeowners that were closest to the area. So um, I I I I'm saying that I I helped because I I wanted to help, one, of course, as a city council member, but because I have that experience in door knocking, and none of them did, and they didn't know what to do. But the thing that's interesting is that letter about the neighborhood watch where we invited people and we only got a few attendees. It's not marketed in there that this is about this issue and we need a no trespassing notice. There wasn't a follow-up letter to these members saying, hey, we need this. It was more, can you share, you know, it was really the onus of of one property owner and whether or not they're going to get a an H O A, you know, I I don't think that'll ever happen, but it it very much feels that we're expecting too much of them. Because when they came to us, they were saying, we know this is a problem and we don't have the resources to fix this. We don't have the resources to go in there and clean this up because we don't know who to contact to clean up the drug paraphernalia. You know, so we just want the city to help us figure that out. We don't know how to, we don't have anyone to fix the fence. And in the past, the city has fixed the fence, including um, in the uh, map that was shared with the plots, there's one of those um, you called it a tract. One of them was, I think it was a public safety issue. There was a car accident. And um, so the fence was broken. The city did end up fixing it. So I'm curious to know, you know, as part of this, if the city sent this many letters to the residents to say we're going to fix this fence and you have to pay. And they actually, the residents, the ones who were vocal did come to us and say, we're happy to pay if you guys can do the work. And so it just, it feels um, like we're just placing too much emphasis on that they haven't done anything. And so that's why I'm not comfortable signing the the um, voting on the resolution the way it is. Um, and I have a couple other like notes or questions about how we handle this in the future, what this means for few other properties. But um, I don't want to take up all of our time, but I just wanted to share because I I want us all to have a chance. But I do want to share, I think before approving this, I would like to see in a moment to remove maybe a couple of the whereas that make it seem like um, that that they haven't done anything, or maybe if we can edit so that it it says, you know, it says something about how they came to us. Um, because I think if they were to read this, they would be really upset to see how it's being portrayed, very different than the presentation, by the way. And I had a feeling that was gonna happen, that be the case, because of course, some document that's so you know, so specific and stringent is going to come across very different than um, our wonderful um, public works director speaking about the whole history of it. But it's just, it's just, take a look again at that resolution and you'll see it 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 doesn't feel right to to word it this way. Um, and thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm not sure which order these came in. So um, I'm going to go Councilmember Paddock.
I just had one question, which is, i- is this a kind of a sample set of one, or are there multiple areas like this? Do we know? With the common and unvited interest? Yeah, yeah. Many of these. Many of these. Okay. So what we do here County's practice in the past was to do these common undivided interests. And so I think anything that two thousand and five annexation I shouldn't say anything. Many of those in that area have that issue. There's another it's not a homeless issue, but there's like a one hundred and thirty-second. There's a neighborhood that has that split up. And so there's several of these that without an H O A, and I think it is a very tough thing. Grant and I have talked about this. I wish there was some way for them to organize. Because the trick is, how do they come together and how do they split the bill? It takes a moment. I'm very passionate about wanting to do it, but nobody wants to step up and take it all on themselves. So it's a bad situation. Okay, and 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 even tougher that this will be the precedent for what happens potentially in other scenarios. That's helpful.
Councilmember Allison. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So if we were to approve this as it's written, um, would they have a period of time to take action, or would we immediately? You know, post notices and just clean it up and send them the bill? Like, how do we operationalize?
As written, it says August fourteenth. Yeah. So if they don't clean up on August fourteenth, then city manager would direct staff to go hire somebody to clean it up.
Okay, and to Councilmember Duque's concern, you know, when they came to us and they were asking for, you know, how do we go about doing this? If we're going to give them a notice, are we going to give them a list of people that are willing to go perform that kind of a service? I mean, what what are we doing to help them help themselves?
Well, let the city attorney answer. That's outside what so we we have people we use, but I think the city attorney, I guess, answers what we can do.
So uh, what what we would send them and Councilmember Allison is a copy of the resolution. They've already received the letter previously. We certainly could add into uh, the the notice that goes out to them a list of companies, if we have a list uh, who who they could contract directly with to do this as well. Um, because we have identified, I believe, several companies that perform these these services. So that's something that could be added to the notice letter that goes out to them if council approves the resolution.
Um, Councilmember Steckler.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, well, I I have a couple thoughts, and I've heard quite a few comments. Um, my initial reason reason for pushing my button was um, I felt that uh, Director Todd, that the the date of um, August fourteenth was maybe a little bit too soon from getting the letter. Couple of weeks, I I would prefer that maybe we gave them till the end of the month of August. Um, I really love the idea. If we're going to send them a letter, also include this list of uh, resources to use. I think that's a great idea because I would feel pretty lost if I was one of the homeowners and who do I call to do this? If if we can give them a list of resources to do that, I think that's a great idea. I also, and maybe I'm not, I I was listening to uh, Councilmember Duque's comments. Um, I I was under the impression that the process that we went through and I seen the Councilmember Paddock's comments, the process that we went through was uh, first, we 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 tried to help them uh, uh, group together and offered our services here to uh, say, how could we help you guys work together as a resource and um, and and provide that service? And then tried once again to collectively um, reach out to them via the letters and uh, and so we have made a number of efforts to to help them. This is not our first communication to them. But due to the lack of of results, we we've had and lack of an H O A. This is the the third step, which is you have to either clean this up or we'll have to do it and 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 charge you. And that is kind of a common practice is is that in in a in a lack of an H O A, uh, you do uh, have to, uh, even an H O A. If there is a problem with a particular property, we 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 have to clean it up for the rest of the H O A. And then we have to charge the homeowner, put a lien on the homeowners uh, for that service. So that's a common practice. I think I I think we're doing everything okay, although Councilmember Duque, if there are particular uh, elements of this, I am uh, not opposed. If she if she has a couple of comments that she would like to suggest specific changes that she would make her feel more comfortable, I I'd be I'd be more than open to hear those. My only request, I I actually support this. I think it's a good example, and I think you've done some really great efforts uh, initially to to try and make this a last resort. My only request is if you could give them more than two weeks. Um, that's not much time. It's a pretty ugly project. I would ask that you give them at least thirty days, and I'd like to make that a precedent that a last resort. So I would I would ask that you change it to the to the end of August would be my only request. Thank you.
Councilmember Cavalieri. Councilmember Cavalier.
Thanks, Mayor. An attorney friend of mine asked me, she lived in, lived in Everett, now lives in Mill Creek. She said, boy, how do we keep Mill Creek so polished? This, paying attention to the details, paying attention to these these dilapidated areas. Which have, we know exactly how they come into our community. It's the action plan set forth, I think other council members up here alluded, we've been doing this for two years. I remember the presentation of the the gentleman and I don't know if it was his spouse or his friend, but they said the same thing. What are we supposed to do about it? The answer is this, this is like a stage five cancer. It's not gonna get better, it's only gonna get worse. Even the home home challenged don't wanna go back there at this point. We've agreed as a council to be proactive as a concept in dealing with this stuff. And and trying to maybe soften language two years after the fact is uh. Is is only just gonna allow this prolongation of this problem. Sometimes sitting in this seat, sorry. Sometimes sitting in this seat, it's 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 awful being the bad guy, but we're not the bad guy here. There's a daycare that has to suffer through this nonsense twenty-four seven. This is about being a good neighbor and these thirty-seven home or tracks, whomever they are. It's time to be a good neighbor, that's what comes with homeownership is responsibility, thank you.
Thank you, I see, um I have a few things to say and then I see that council member Duque has um her button lit up again. So um my thoughts that I wanna add here is um I hear what council member Duque is saying. And that this was also some of my concerns that um I do feel that these homeowners came to us. Begging us to help with and telling us we they don't know what to do and how do we resolve this? And um perhaps some of the language is is a little harsh. And realizing that they actually came to us begging for us to help them. Um and I wanna make sure that that is acknowledged, that they came here to to ask for our help. And I know um if I'd gotten a letter just demanding I clean up something after I had been begging for help. I would be kind of angry um myself um for receiving that letter after begging for help. That said, I also um I'm looking at this and I know from my previous experience managing homeowners associations. Um that legally, we can't do things until we have certain things in place. And so um as I look over this, I'm assuming some of this language is in here. Because the attorney has looked over this and said that we need to say these things and have this. This recorded in order for us to go in and do the work that they are asking and begging for us to do to clean up the space. So I personally don't expect that they're going to go and clean up because they're begging us to do something and help them. But I know legally, we have to have the parameters in place so that we can actually legally go in and clean up that property. Because it is owned by thirty-seven homeowners. So that's why I'm assuming that this is worded the way it is. Um so with that said too, I also, um along with council member Steckler. Um I'm not opposed to listening to the thoughts that council member Duque had on which things that she um would prefer. Be different in here so that we can get this approved this evening, so that we can get in there and start cleaning up this property. Cuz this went on way too long, so um I am interested, I would be interested in hearing what that is. And um I want us to make sure we get this moving forward. Because these homeowners have waited way too long to get this property cleaned up so that they don't, they are um not having to look out on this. Eh every day and that they can feel safe i- in their space. And we need to be making sure that we have processes in place on how to deal with this in the future, once it is cleaned up. So that if it's, if we start to have this again, how do we deal with this again when there are thirty-seven homeowners? So we need to make sure we know what to do next time, um because this has taken a while. So that's my thoughts and with that, um council member Duque is lit up.
Thank you, everyone, for for um all of that, um really great feedback. Um I had two questions before, um I had a a couple of things I wanted to ask. The first is, what about fixing the fence? This addresses the cleanup, but um not the fence um build, which is another concern that the property um owners had said. Because they, their experience in the past is that the city had, they, so they got the original notice. Because the fence was broken, um which the property owner said it was broken because people are entering there. And not because we haven't, we've let it to go. Uh I I no additional comment to that sentence, but what about the fence itself? Is that included in this resolution or can we get it to be included? Because it's not just the cleanup there, but it's also, we're saying that you have a broken um fence that should be um up to standards.
We are not saying, not not talking about the fence at all in this.
Mm-hmm.
I may have run out of battery, I don't know.
Oh, again, okay.
And then there's nothing in this about the fence.
Okay, Grant um raises hand too.
Yes, uh there's nothing in there that uh about requiring it. Under our ordinance, um the if our our authority is to uh require uh removal of the litter and debris. So the fence itself would not be specifically identified as something that the homeowners are required to do.
So there's not a code violation cuz I thought that's the reason why this brought brought up.
This is about cleaning up the litter and debris.
Correct.
There's a separate issue that the city could take to say, your fence is not being maintained. This doesn't touch that.
So that's helpful and so. The next step, then we would need, you're saying that there needs to be um a resolution, this it's doing exactly the same thing, saying they need to fix their fence.
I'm not saying this.
You're not saying that, how do we get the fence?
Start to be up here, so.
Yeah, 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 I'll I'll, I'm looking at Grant sideways.
So I'm sorry, council member.
Sorry, back to Grant, yeah.
Did you want me to just take a shot at that question? So so the uh the answer is, it's their property. Um they have the responsibility for maintaining it. A fence would be a valuable um method of helping to uh, you know, curb. Or discourage people from coming in there and camping and doing whatever. So certainly that is a potential alternative that the homeowners could uh initiate to do something there. Um but in terms of this enforcement, the focus here is removing the litter and debris. Because that's what we're, uh the city has authority to do under um ca- uh chapter seventeen twenty-four.
Thank you for that. And so my concern is that part of the issue is that the fence, the reason why this got brought up. And that's why they realized there were people back there and that's why it was broken is because they were told that the fence violated a code. And so how do we, or and and maybe they just get rid of the fence and then 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 there's nothing to fix, that could be their solution. Um but the 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 question is that they need support in getting that fence fixed. And so uh uh so I guess there's two questions. One is the um, and and I'm making a point of it now, even though it's not part of this, because I think it's hand in hand. And I don't, and I think if we don't address both, then we're not solving um anything. So um but understand if anyone wants to have like a point of order or anything like that. Um but is there a code violation then for their fence being the way it is?
Yes.
And so then how do we handle as a city, those code violations to get them fixed?
So we typically would send them a letter, give them thirty days to fix it, then we'd send them a second letter, same kind of process would start. But we have not talked to them about that fence that I'm aware of. There may be confusion, there's another fence issue. If Adrian, Adrian, would you put up slide uh three and then four again? The fence that was hit by a car, safety issue, the city finally fixed was cuz we couldn't get these thirty-seven people. Somebody said, hey, I got some volunteers, we will fix this, just never got resolved, but she decided to do it. So down at the bottom, uh back up one for me, Adrian, for a second, oh, there are three right there, uh right there. So one down at the bottom, that little one, track nine nine six, it's hard to see. That is their stormwater pond, so now go to the next one, it's easier to see where it is. It's right next to Silver Crest Drive down at the bottom. So somebody was going too fast, Silver Crest Drive crashed into that fence, knocked out one six-foot cedar fence panel. So we tried for a long time, there was that orange caution tape across there, we got, finally got this back, Matthew Combs' time. Finally said, forget this, Jason can go out there and fix this in a couple of hours, but it's a couple of two-by-fours and some nails. So we just did it because we couldn't get this resolved and we thought it was a safety issue. So the city took the termination, my call, I said, it isn't worth trying to charge somebody, get thirty-seven letters. Cuz the volunteers weren't coming through, let's just do it. So that fence we fixed and the public paid for that. And I apologize to the public that we spent a couple of hours in Jason's time and some nails to do that. But that was the right decision for that, this one is a bigger deal, this fence is is in, it's nineteen ninety-four fence, it's really old.
Yes, absolutely, and I want to say on on that fence, thank you, because that's actually our our school um bus stop. Right there, right there in front. And so the kids, and this is both high school, middle school and elementary, that is our bus stop and we all saw that. And so the day that I saw Matthew was there to fix it, I was like, so thank you, you know, cuz that. And I I had, I knew it was the homeowners to do. But you know, so it's one of those like weird places, but this is, that's exactly my issue with this is it needs to be addressed. And so I believe this all started because a letter was sent out from, and I think it it might have been Tom Rogers. Um so I believe, I I believe a letter may have been sent out and maybe with all of the changes in staffing, there was never any follow up. Because then it became an encampment thing, but I'd really like us to follow up on then sending, doing exactly the same process. Cuz that's what you said is outlined, to address that fence. And and I guarantee it's most likely the same thing where we're gonna have to fix it and then charge them for it. Um because that's just seems the path, so I'll stop there, I won't bring up fence in this particular one. But I think it's really important to that that um that we do move forward with that, please. Because it 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 they won't get solved if the other way. Then I had a um a a comment back to council member Steckler, cuz he said something about um continuing a couple of space. Did wanna flag that they did send out an email, um a letter, a formal letter on June, uh was it sixteenth or thirteenth? That asked for them to do it, so they've already been notified once. And so I wouldn't want to delay um any longer from the resources. Because they've been actually asking for those resources since last year. Um and there was also, I think, some confusion because they thought, many of the homeowners thought it actually belonged to, the fence wa- belonged to the Thomas um Shopping Center. So I know they were trying to figure out if they could get them to pay for it, um but that's a a whole nother thing. The changes I would like just made, and I think, I mean, I I I I do wanna, wait, there's one other thing I wanted to flag. I didn't um like in the email that was sent or in the official letter that was sent on June twelfth or thirteenth when that was sent. There was language that said, unfortunately, we must take action to resolve this issue. It just, that's that's the kind of tone that I I didn't understand why we needed to do that. Um so I'd I'd like us moving forward as we work on these letters that are sent to community, that we think through our previous communications with them. The other thing is, I would like us to follow up with a letter to each homeowner again, explaining that no trespasser action thing. Because that wasn't in the letter that got people here, that was just, the letter was just, hey, we're trying to set up a neighborhood watch. So um it wasn't until people were here that heard about it. And so maybe there's something there to include additional people cuz we really need that that ma- that thing. Um in terms of the language, the change, I would like, you know, if everyone seems to be okay with it, you were just willing to hear from me. But it seems you read it and you didn't get the tone, some people did kinda got the tone um in that. I I'd like there to be just a, you know, whereas property owners have reached out to the city requesting assistance from the city. Because they do not have the resources to address. Something is simple and it doesn't have to be that language for Grant, you know, or for, you know, um city manager Yamamoto. But something as simple as saying that, just acknowledging whereas they have reached out to the city. And um because they're unable to do would make me feel much more comfortable. And then we don't have to like line item, you know, particular tone words or anything like that, cuz I don't want to delay this process.
Um council member Duque, if we were to, um I think we probably, if everyone would be okay with us doing that. I think if we were to add in one of the whereas is to make a point that they had actually um came to us seeking help. Um and maybe Grant can elaborate on that, how we can fit that in, um to work that in.
I think I'd have to make an, um I'd have to amend the motion.
Yeah, we'd have to amend it.
And then get a second, right?
Well, I think so, let's see what Grant's recommending first.
So uh council member Duque, my suggestion would be to add it at the seventh whereas, which is currently says, starts on, whereas on July twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And I would suggest something of, um if I could capture it this way, whereas several homeowners approached the city regarding the conditions on the property. And then on July uh twelfth, twenty twenty-two, there was a meeting. Um in other words, trying to get over your, uh trying to focus on your your key point. Which was that the homeowners homeowners were initiating contact with the city.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, so then Grant, would I have to, because it's been motion and seconded and it's a change the resolution? Would I need to ask um for an amendment to add that additional language?
You would, yes.
Yes. Stephanie, may I make an amendment?
So I made the motion.
So yet two, Vince, is that okay?
Grant, what was your language, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, it would be mo- moved to amend um.
This is on the seventh whereas.
At the seventh whereas clause, add a new initial clause that states, whereas several homeowners approached the city regarding the conditions on the property. Uh se- uh seeking assistance, comma, and on, then pick up the rest of it on July twelve, twenty twenty-two.
I would amend the motion to reflect the city attorney's language.
Do we need to a second and vote on that, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Um do I have a second?
No, second.
All those in favor of the um amendment to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? The motion to amend the motion passes. Okay, now I still have two lights lit up, um council member Paddock.
I had two questions, I think you answered this one already, Director Todd, but the, when um uh if this is picked up by the city. The cost would go out one thirty-seven per household?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, and if one of the households defaulted, that would be their responsibility, not spread amongst the other thirty-six?
That's my understanding, but Grant, cuz I think, I think if somebody pays their bill, we're gonna send, imagine we'll send invoices to thirty-seven. If they pay, they're all good, if they don't pay, I think it go, we would have to put a lien on the property.
Yeah.
And then that would show up when they sold the property as a blind under title.
Cuz that that sounds like the intent of those first folks that came and said, we need help, you know, we're willing to do our share. We can't get the other X number to do it, we're stepping in and saying, well, we'll we'll help you do that. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Steckler.
Uh I heard council member Duque's comment about my my request on the August fourteenth date. But I know we gave them notice a while ago, but now we're giving them a new notice now that we're we're going to charge them. Uh if they don't get this done in the next two weeks. Uh I I I do think that does sound like a little bit of dress, so I'm gonna officially ask that we move that date. The council can vote me down, but I I think that's pushing people to send them a new letter now and saying, you know, I mean, that's one week from today is August first. Uh by the time we get this letter out to everybody and they receive it in the mail, uh in two weeks, you've gotta get this done. Or um we're 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 gonna, we're gonna do it, charge you. Um that's that's a little bit, little bit uh little bit draconian and I, I think it would be understandable and in the right interest to extend that to the thirtieth. But that'd be a request for a a change that I would ask for our.
Do you wanna move to amend?
Yes, I moved to amend. So I would need a second. Amend specifically to what? To from August fourteenth uh to August thirtieth.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, thank you. I was doing that little thing in my head, thirty days, I September.
I'd second that, I'd second that for discussion, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, but oh, sorry, councilor Allison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um I'm just concerned by extending it, we're just extending the pain for a couple more weeks. They've been given so many chances, I felt the same way, um council member Steckler at first. But you know, reviewing all of the attempts that we have, the city has gone through. Um I don't know that it's going to change anything by giving them a couple more weeks.
Councilmember Steckler.
Just in response to that, what if they call this list of people and they can't get to it for three weeks or four weeks? Uh what do we do then? Two weeks is a pretty quick turnaround.
All right, all those in favor?
Any other lights?
All those against? All those against?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Okay, motion to amend fails. So now can we go back to the motion as amended, um, agreed upon, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Grant, for that. Help on the spot. Um, before we move on to the next, um, point, the resolution on Silvercrest Park, um, is eight eleven, and we seem to be, um, more comments tonight. So I would like to, could I entertain a motion to maybe extend the meeting to nine thirty?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mayor, can I also make one recommendation?
Sure.
I know the Snow Isle folks have been patiently waiting. If we could maybe take them out of order?
I'm, I'm okay with that if everybody else is. Okay, but let's keep, okay, but motion, um, we said aye, any against extending to nine thirty? Motion passes, um, meaning extended till nine thirty. Um, and with that, yes, we will go ahead and let, um, move to, new business item E, the resolution on the amendment to Snow Isle Library Annexation Agreement, um, which is also Mike Todd. Um, we'll turn around and put your other hat on.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council and esteemed guests. We have tonight Chy Ross, who's the Assistant Director of Strategic Strategy, excuse me, Capital Strategy and Planning. And a new member of the Snow Isle team is Vanessa Gutierrez, who we've not met yet, but she's the Community Engagement Manager, I thought, as a couple of months ago. And we're not trying to scare you off. It's not always this long. We're a lot of fun. But they're just so interested in our library. They wanted to come here and, and hang out with us for tonight. So we appreciate that. We owe you something. So, thank you, Adrian, for calling that up. I'll try to go fast on this, but you know me, I've gotta talk through a bunch of slides here. Uh, the city in the Snow Isle, uh, started our, our relationship, before two thousand four, when we first built the library, I think it was like nineteen eighty six or something, the city provided contract, that, Snow Isle provided contract services to provide a library, and the city paid for it out of our own pocket. And it was part, it was one of the line items, is one of those other expense things that we paid. Two thousand four, the voters decided to annex into the library district, much like with the fire districts. We took it off of our general, fund requirements and put it onto the voters. So the voters now pay into that. Uh, under that agreement, it's a fairly simple agreement. It's in your packet there, but it, it basically, we provide the building, because we have the building in the first place, the building, the parking lot, that's all ours. And Snow Isle provides the materials and the services. They staff it, they run it, but we take care of the building. We're like the landlord for that building. It's not the cleanest landlord tenant agreement, when Chy and I have been talking about fixing that up, because it goes way back, but basically, we're the landlord and they're the tenant. The annexation agreement, when they first put it in, provided for a reserves fund to be created, and so cleverly, over the first three years, of annexation, they took some money from the Snow Isle taxpayers and put it in this reserves fund, and it was, hundred thousand this year, hundred fifty that, or whatever it got to be, it's like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was in there and is sitting there for, major repairs or upgrades. I think the thought originally was it'd be a big enough hunk of money, that the interest offer that would pay for all kinds of things. That's just wasn't realistic, but it was a good fund to have in there. So we have that to draw upon. Uh, that was tapped in two thousand eight. Some of you have been around, remember we extended the parking lot? It was like a ninety five thousand dollar project and the ci- city only had eighty, I think. And so we went and again, did this kind of thing where we amended the agreement, and said, is it okay by both our governing body, you as a council, and their governing body, their Board of Trustees, to say, can we tap into? And they said, yeah. So fifteen thousand came out of that fund. So there's essentially thirty five plus, interest is in that fund. I don't know exactly what the number is, but Chy tells me it's all still there. Mostly. It is. There we go, yeah. What is it?
Approximately three hundred and thirty.
Three hundred and thirties, yeah. So anyway, it's about that kind of number. Uh, next slide, please. So the original building was smaller, nineteen ninety one, remember a long time before we annexed, it added about three thousand square feet. So everything, if you think about everything from the children's area, the children's area was added and everything back from that is the three thousand square feet that was new. All the plans were done, all the inspections were done, but somehow it was built with flooring, the, the subfloor sheathing, the plywood was not what it was supposed to be. If you look at the inspection ticket, it wasn't ever signed off. It's embarrassing, but it's so far back, who knows? But basically, they, saw the drawing, it's, it's confusing drawing. It says five inch plywood on the ceiling and three quarters tongue in groove, forty eight twenty four rated panels on the floor. It looks like they put the same both places. So the joists are twenty four inches apart. It bends and bends and bends. We put heavy books on it, put a lot of heavy people on it. Matthew Combs walked through there and said, remember Matthew's a little bit, it's kinda like, this is kinda springy. And so basically the panel de-laminated. So the interior glue in the piece of plywood is kinda de-laminated. So nobody's gonna fall through the floor, but it's pretty, pretty spongy. So, gosh, a year and a half ago now, I think Chy, we, we went in there, the city had, we dug it up, you know, opened it up and looked in there, to checking for rot, we were worried about is this thing got water problems and it absolutely doesn't have that. It's just these, panels are de-laminated. So the city had it in our plan for about eighty thousand dollars back then, when lumber was cheaper. We estimated about eighty thousand bucks to put in, double up the joists and put in the right kind of flooring. And then this, the library's gonna put on new carpet. The carpet's a little aged, but you gotta tear out all the carpet, all the baseboards, redo the walls at that same time. So we had it in our capital budget for eighty thousand dollars. Um, and we needed to coordinate closely with them, because we can't just come in and say, leave, leave a couple of days, we'll fix this, because you imagine all those books, all those desks, all the library operations were affected. So that was the conversation we were having. Uh, next page, next desk slide, please. So I just said that requires new carpet, baseboard and paint. Whoops, sorry, I, I peeked you out there, Adrian. Uh, but, but the building also has an aging HVA sys- HVAC system. It's probably the same age as the nineteen ninety one or the nineteen eighty six original thing. We've kind of monkey, monkeyed that along and it's kind of worked. Um, but it takes a lot of maintenance. They've gone to unisex bathrooms. It was advantageous for their operations. So the existing bathrooms were built as a men's and women's. They've made them into unisex, but it was just by changing the signs on the doors and a few things, it wasn't really done that way. Other upgrades and repair makes a lot of sense while it's closed. And overall, looking at adding life to the building, aligning it with our current operational model and establishing as a cooling center. Right now, mostly, you know, when it gets hot, you get the word that go to a library, it's a cooling center. Well, the Mill Creek Library is not on that list. Cause HVAC system last year decided that was the day to fail. We got a phone call and said, what do we do? So we fixed it, but it was like two days too late, wasn't it? It was, it was not a good situation. So that's why it's no longer a cooling center. So this is an aging building overall. So a bigger project made sense. Now we can go to the next slide. So they've been looking at that. It's, I think you're kind of, I'm saying preliminary project costs, I guess, five hundred to five fifty. Because we haven't lined up all this funding yet, and because the library has lots of other projects, they haven't got to a full design contract and they're not putting it out to bid yet, because it takes some approval to get the funding together, but it's on that order of magnitude. Um, headed towards the twenty twenty four construction, if we can pull this together. We got a hundred, we got two hundred thousand essentially from state legislature at that mid biennium. They came to us and said, what could you use money for? And we said, this library project would help the whole community, not just Mill Creek. And so our state legislators gave us two hundred approximately minus the, the cut that they take for managing the grants, hundred ninety two thousand. And so that was available to us through, July first, June thirtieth, I guess, of twenty twenty three. We have extended that in the next biennium. So we were happy to see that our state legislator moved that forward. So we had two years for that money to be spent. As Chy said, we have about three thirty, three thirty five, and then a reserve fund. And so the one ninety two and the three thirty five, says there's a difference in there of something, and the, and that's what the Board of Trustees has said, that is worth doing this project, out of their own general funds. And so the agreement that we're headed towards is putting all of the state money into it, which is more than we thought we were gonna have to pay for the floor. Adding with the reserve fund, which our tax, the, the, not our taxpayers, the taxpayers for Snow Isle have paid into it, and some money from the library district, seemed like a reasonable way to go. Next slide. Oh, and I guess the other thing is that, Chy, I twisted his arm a little bit. I didn't have to twist too hard. It makes sense for them to manage the project. So particularly since we're really short of resources, we will have to manage the grant. But they will manage the project, because it has a lot of interdependencies on how they staff and what they might wanna do. Didn't make sense for us to muck in their ditch and have a bunch of project managers. So this is a good, right way to go ahead. Uh, so the annexation agreement, so, uh, the annexation agreement makes, use the reserve funds, takes approval of both governing bodies. If one doesn't agree, we can't tap those funds. That's why we're here before you tonight. They considered it last night. They passed it unanimously. They probably didn't have to wait till eight thirty to do it. I don't know, just guessing. Um, or eight twenty three to do it. Um, uh, it makes clear that the city only provides that, the full amount of the state grant. And that is the, what I think is the clear amount of that. We don't have that state grant in hand, because to get the state grant contract, we have to say a couple of things. Number one, that it's no, you know, historical artifacts that we would dig up in this project and other things like that. One of them is you have to have all your funding clear. So the funding isn't clear until we have this action, to allow their Board of Trustees and you as a council to say, use that reserve fund. So that's why we don't have a contract, because our meaning is, where's the contract? Where's the contract? The trick is, it's in the mail. It kind of depends on you both. Uh, there, there is a condition in there that says, when the reserve fund is depleted, both parties agree to meet to decide on how future improvement or repairs will, will be funded. There will be no money. We don't anticipate any big things, but really, there would be, we would have to come together and say, now there's no longer the safety net of reserve fund. I don't think that's extraordinary. That's my personal opinion. That's for you to decide, but I think this is a reasonable way to use that reserve fund and the state money and a little bit of their money to get, a library that's gonna be good for ten or more years in terms of the new HVAC system, new floor, new carpeting, new paint, new bathrooms, a bunch of stuff. It's gonna be really a good, great, great way to serve our community. As we know, we've got one of the busiest libraries in the system, or the smallest and one of the busiest. This is a really good investment. I think that's why their Board of Directors said this is, makes sense to do. Next slide. Oh, I said there, that's, that the grant contract can be finalized. Uh, later on, we will amend our CIP. You know, we don't have money, our CIP right now says eighty thousand dollars for repairing the floor. It doesn't say five hundred and something thousand dollars for a project. Laurel assures me when we do the mid biennium, uh, budget adjustment, we'll also amend our CIP to change this project, to make it all line up. And by then, we'll probably have some more numbers from the, from Snow Isle in terms of what number we put in, but it'd be typically like Frank would bring us to be a CIP amendment. Uh, and I said, we'll administer the contract, they're gonna perform it. And there's no change in the city ownership of the building or the agreement that they, Snow Isle uses it. It doesn't affect that. That's still a general overall thing. And like I said, China already agreed to say, we'll talk about, how do we maintain this, or how do we work together on it? We won't get as many calls for the broken HVAC system. We won't get as many calls for the bathroom, that's having issues, but we do need to work that out as a landlord and a tenant to say, interior light bulbs, your deal, rain coders are our deal, that kind of stuff. With that, if there's any, are open for questions. And this is the proposed motion I would take. It's addendum number three, because the first addendum was to, take the money for the parking lot. Second addendum, it had this weird thing where, somehow we were charged in the janitorial. They had to do it and charge us back and they cleaned that up in two thousand eight. That's why we're on addendum three. But those two addendums don't change the nature of the agreement itself.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Oh, yeah.
Oh, council member Allison had a question real quick.
Yeah, so, um, is, is the property that the library is on, was that granted to us? And is there any stipulations to that grant?
Yes, it was given by the, family. Oh, gosh. The Hemet family, Hemet family, for the purpose of a library. This, this often gets brought up as it is required to be a library. And so if someday in the future, the city said, gee, we don't want to be a library anymore, we would have some discussions, to figure out how to do that. Right now, that Snow Isle has no plans to change away from that. I think we've talked in the past, long time ago, previous generations, they've had long-term strategic plans to say, would you build another additional library? I think, was, Chy, fill us in, it's a couple of years from now, you're, you're working on a next strategic plan? Go, yeah, go to the microphone, please.
Great, thank you, Mayor Protem, council members. Thanks a lot for, uh, the opportunity to answer the question, for considering this addendum tonight. Um, we are currently in a, a period of long-term strategic planning for our, our capital goals. It's actually a dynamic plan. I won't be bringing you a three-ring binder with a bunch of, uh, uh, the, you know, deep, uh, chapters on each library. And it like, uh, perhaps we've produced in the past, um, but we're going community by community and really working closely with the communities to, uh, come up with goals that align with the community's needs and meet the, um, meet needs of the library users. We are well aware that we are underbuilt for this region of the county and Mill Creek and, and other parts of, of South County, but, working together with the community in order to come up with the right plan for the future, we also know is going to take time, which is why we're focused on, updating and repairing the current building in great partnership with, uh, with you all and with, uh, Mike, who's been a great partner to work with. Um, but once we get through this project and execute it, we will be coming back and working on a long-term strategic plan for, the future of a library facility for Mill Creek and the rest of the wider community in South Snohomish County.
Thank you. And one, one more question while you're up there. Um, if the, if the fund is depleted, your reserve fund is depleted, to fund this project, how would you then operate? You know, would you be able to replenish those reserves?
That's a part of the discussion that we're committed to have afterwards. We're absolutely committed to meeting that term in the annexation agreement that wants the reserve fund is you, used up, the two parties reconvene and, um, negotiate the right agreement going forward. The intent of the reserve fund is largely, um, was created for maintenance, repair, um, emergency situations, and we would build that into a new agreement. Um, we believe there are better approaches today than what was built twenty five years ago, but we're happy to have that conversation.
Thank you. Okay.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Like to make a motion, to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute addendum number three to the library annexation agreement, contingent upon Snow Isle's adoption of the same addendum.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Um, I actually have discussions, so I'll, I'll start with myself. Um, privilege. Um, I just wanna say, I am extremely excited that I was able to work with Representative Berg, and bring this money in to the library. And I'm so excited that we're gonna be able to do this project and move forward and make the library better, for our community, because it is so used and there's so many people in there and it's such, a source for our community to bring us together. And I'm really excited and looking forward to these new renovations. And being able to see that, I just realized that this probably means I'm not gonna be able to go to the library for a little while, because we'll have, I'll, it'll have to be worked on. So I'm curious to know, um, side note, what the, um, plans are while the renovations are, are being done. Cause I know this is the busiest library for holds on books. And, um, so how, what's the plan to work around that?
Yeah, so we are fully committed to ensuring that the community will continue to have access to library services. Um, when we do a project like this that does require a closure, and I will be honest, in this case, you're right, it will be a closure that will, will impact you if you're, you're a library user. Um, we really customize a solution for each community. And so I don't have a, a full answer for you for Mill Creek yet, but that commitment is strong and we will be sure that, uh, folks can pick up their holds and access other library services.
Perfect, thank you. Um, okay, um, council member Cavallari.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I made the motion, so of course I support it. Um, I appreciate the creative way in which this, this project is funded. I think that's a good collaboration, some state money and, and utilizing these funds that were probably earmarked for that. And then, and, I think I've been up here a little over eight years and we've been talking about the floor almost as long as I've been here of the library. So I know it's been an issue and it's, and it's about time to be a, a, a good responsible partner and, and, you know, kick in our end, so to speak, and, and get this repaired. So, uh, more power to you. Thanks for bringing it forward.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Eight twenty nine and a half. Thank you.
All right, so now we're coming back to the discussion on the resolution on Silvercrest Park.
Yes, thank you, council, Mayor Protem, staff, everyone again. Here we go. So, uh, Silvercroft, Silvercrest Park Rehabilitation Project, giving you update. We had a bid opening on July sixth. Frank could not be here this evening, so I'm gonna carry this one on. So this, I mean, here's the general outline, give you an overview, construction contract, bid opening outcome, brief summary of our evaluation of the risks received, project funding, expense commitment status, proposed motion and questions. So next slide. In case you don't know, oh, gosh. Okay, in case you don't know, this, uh, there's another slide and a different, different version of this, I apologize. Silvercrest Park. Silvercrest Park. Is. A couple of blocks. West of what we were just talking about Sunset Lane. It's north of Silvercrest Drive. South of the loop, we sometimes call the racetrack. I don't know if you guys call it that, but it's that racetrack neighborhood in there. It was built by Snohomish County or built maybe built by a developer and given Snohomish County when we annexed it became our park. Since then, we've done some things over the years, past basketball court. Upgraded the, the play equipment once, but this is a very small park. In the map, if I could have showed it to you and you'll see a little bit later on is there's one, two, three, four, five. There's only five parcels that back up to it. So it's behind five people's property. And it's accessed off a little cul-de-sac. It's a very small park. Here's a, a picture of some of the conditions right now. I, if you look around the right, where is the right? Yeah, thank you, Adrian. Right there is you can see where the two by fours are holding up the fence that's trying to fall over. So that's the. Fence with the neighbor and you can see on the place was broken in the back. No homeless living behind the fence. Those are homeowners back there. You can see there's, there's some things that need fixing up like concrete pads underneath the picnic tables. That one doesn't look too bad. It's actually worse in person. Next slide. There is a path right now that's not ADA accessible. It's just a gravel path that goes through the, through the grass. And so that's the kind of thing that if you touch this park and want to improve it, it's important to get to ADA standards. And so that's part of this project was to make that path go all the way. In the far distance there, you can see the path that goes up to the neighborhood, that racetrack neighborhood. And off to the left of this is where Little Parking Lot is. That's the basketball court. It's got a ten foot high fence. And it's a full basketball court and you can see the ponding of the water there. It's mostly flat, but not very flat. If you put a ball on it, it rolls off the one side, but it does have a fence around it and it's. Used some, but it's the only basketball court the city really has, but I think we've also got basketball courts as a community at most of the schools. So this, but this is the one basketball court we have. Next slide. This is a excerpt out of the design that was done for us by Brewsteed and Associates. And it kind of gives you a flavor of what's going on there. You can see that this is an upgraded, replaced, it's a new, I should say, it's a new surface for the basketball court. That's proposed to have the, instead of just plain old asphalt, it's going to be the green like you can see on a tennis court. We'll come back to that in a minute. Also with some lines for pickleball. This shows one, I think the final design is to have two going crosswise, but no nets, but lines for pickleball. Lines for basketball, basketball hoops, a fence around it again. And what we've seen, thing we did at Mill Creek Sports Park where there's the boards on the bottom. So if the ball gets kicked, it doesn't ruin the. The cyclone fence. If you kick a ball, it's a cyclone fence enough against it, it wrecks it. So this has got that extra on the bottom. You can't see in this thing. Number seven over there is the new fence that needs to get replaced. Number four is basically saying that play area has a curb around it. It's a concrete curve. It's broken. And we put new play chips in there. Number six is indicating new tables. The plant, final plant has another table added off a little bit over in the grassy area, I believe it is. So it's a second table. And it's still the same bench, but concrete pads underneath those that are more maintainable and it doesn't have that muddy underneath. And number three is the. Gravel path would have an edging on it. So it's number one easier for us to mow and maintain. But also that doesn't, the gravel doesn't migrate off of the grass. Five is talking about new plantings along the side. Remember, there's houses on all sides of this park. Next slide. So advertisement bid for bids went out on June sixteenth. We opened them on July sixth, three bids received. And that's good news. You got three visits. It's great. We tried to bid it in a season to see if somebody had some extra. Capacity instead of bidding. In November through February, which is often the best time to bid, we weren't ready for that. So we bid it. In June, we got three bids, but you can see the engineer's estimate there. It was about two hundred and sixty four thousand dollars, including tax. And then this next bid was three sixty six and four oh two and four sixty five. All way overbid. We dropped our jaw and said, what's going on here? Technically, Lee Langs Hold Contract Contracting of Snohomish, Washington is a responsive bidder, the lowest responsive, responsible bidder and the lowest responsive bid. And we normally would be coming to you and saying, okay, award the contract to the lowest. Responsible and responsive bidder. But you can see those numbers are pretty high. I think the next slide, I go to take, go to the next slide for me. There's a bunch of details in the agenda packet. Frank has done a very comprehensive job with that, but basically. The fact that all of the bids are more than engineers estimate is kind of unusual. The engineer's estimate is not the lowest price. It's supposed to be, if there's a whole span of prices, you're trying to get it about seventy five or eighty percent of the span. And so you kind of expect some to come in lower and some higher, but the fact these are all hires unusual.
Director Todd, isn't that kind of a nature of the environment when, when you have probably more projects than you do have people to do it? I mean, they get a, get to charge a premium, so to speak.
And that's probably what I think is going on. So the next bullet there, key contract unit prices are variable, high quantity items. I'll come back to that. But things like crushed rock and gravel exceptionally high. Topsoil, a hundred and two dollars a cubic yard. If you go to buy some over here at top soils, you won't pay that. It's just crazy high prices. It's a crushed rock. It's a landscaping materials. And those are very high overall by all of the bidders. We dug into some more. I think Frank may talk about it here on a different slide. We talked to some other people as well. It turns out there's a labor shortage for heavy, the queen, heavy equipment operators. And so other cities are thinking, other cities and other agencies are thinking that be part of what's driving it. It's not just the price of the crushed rock from the quarry. Which maybe is being used up by other projects, but it's also labor to get it there. Now, the danger in that is the way you bid these things is it's a materials quantity. And so they say it's a hundred and two dollars for that topsoil. And we estimate it's going to be a hundred yards of it. But if they actually use a hundred and twenty, we get to pay twenty yards more at that higher price. And so it's really dangerous when they have high unit prices. For things that the quantities are kind of unknown. We don't have a survey that says here's exactly how much is going to be in there. So you're going to get yourself in a situation where you need to inspect. And watch, they're going to be inspecting and we're going to be watching and saying, okay, how much stuff did they really put in there? So it's a, Frank is going ding ding ding. This is a dangerous. Kind of thing to have high. It's not just. One of the other items is high. We thought it would be fifteen thousand dollars for the paving. For the, for the line, the painting and lining of the court. It's thirty five thousand dollars in the lowest bid. It's twenty thousand dollars over more than double. That one thing. If it's twenty thousand dollars, it's twenty thousand dollars over. But if it's. Cubic yards of gravel or rock or topsoil or hydro seating, those kinds of things, that's what's kind of spooky. So. Frank's comment there was it may be affected by shortages and available materials or labor like Councilmember Cavallari is talking about. And that's based on bid, on feedback we've heard from other people. It probably is just that three bidders are all really busy and he said, if we can get this work, we'll take it. But this is not really, we're busy doing other things is what probably what's going on. So it's not really been bid competitively. Next slide. All of those who submitted are probably busy. They don't really need that contract, as I just said. It's important to consider that these conditions represent windward spike effects rather than general construction industry trends. We've talked to other cities going back earlier this year and in twenty, in, back in twenty twenty two, people were seeing the pretty good bid prices. We were on, we have a. Monthly call with the other. Public Works Directors and City Engineers from all the other cities. People were getting good bids. Four, five, six months ago. This is probably, people are full up and there's just not much left in this season. So. We really think this is just a spike condition as opposed to a general trend in terms of construction costs. Next slide. Here's some details from the funding things. Originally, we're looking at one hundred and sixty one eight out of our REIT mitigation fund. We have a hundred thousand dollars from Snohomish County in a grant. We have eighty eight two from a state grant. And that gave us the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you look at our capital plan, we had a budget at three fifty. And so that was our target. We've already spent down below the expenses that we've already spent, or we will spend about seventy six thousand on the design contract. That's kind of normal, about twenty percent is what you spend on design. That's about it. But this contract, the construction contract itself is three sixty six. That's the lowest bidder we were talking about. That's more than the whole project was going to be. And Frank is reminding us on top of that, we're probably going to spend about forty five thousand dollars to have this inspection going on. Just normally you inspect the project as being built, but we probably have to have an extra level. Because these quantity estimates issues. And the contingency is typical. If we don't have a contingency, every time something went over a little bit, we have to come back to council for authorization. So we ask for authorization typically for ten percent over. And hopefully you get, you don't use that up and return it. But our three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project turned into a five hundred and twenty five thousand dollar project. Hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, hundred and seventy five, four hundred, hundred and seventy four thousand dollars difference. That caused us pause and being good stewards of the funny funds from a city standpoint, staff standpoint. We've got county funds in there. We've got state funds in there. It caused us to have several discussions internally about what we should do about this because. This is a normal, abnormal situation. What's the right thing to do? So next slide. So Adrian, you may, can you find that other presentation? And I apologize, it's in the presentation folder. It would help because it has the motions.
I think Councilmember Cavallari had a question. Director Todd, I think Councilmember Cavallari had a question.
Give me nine twenty, just a second. I'm trying to help him out so that.
I don't see it. I think.
Fourth from the bottom, presentation of the two thousand twenty three, seven twenty five. Update and bid results with recommendation PowerPoint. Fourth one from the bottom. Go down right there. Click that one. Let me go clear to the end. Back three from the end. There's so questions right here. So our staff recommendation, go back when their, our staff recommendation is we reject all bids. Make minor changes in the contracting documents and rebid later in twenty twenty three. That also helps align with staff capacity. We don't have. About a few, you've heard that Frank's last day is August fourth. And so we have a bunch of interviews scheduled for the next couple of days where we have no engineers as of August fourth. So that's what's hidden behind there. The idea of making minor changes, for instance, the way this got bid, the way that the design specs got put together and because pickleball was a bit, big deal, the specs got written to be exactly aligned with what the. Pickleball Association said was important because remember it was all coming out of state legislature. It's incredibly expensive, partly because it is single sourced. So we should have done something different. We, we think we would do again, you bid it for just a regular basketball court and then you'd say an option is to put pickleball lines on there and you'd see what the delta was. Then you could decide if you want to spend twenty thousand dollars for pickleball lines. Or if they sharpen their pencil a little bit more, it got you a better price. So when I say minor changes, that's the kind of things we would do. We wouldn't change the nature of the project that's tied into the contract. Both with the county and the state in terms of those things, their rehabilitation contract, rehabilitation. Project contracts, they're not put in new features. And we also can't take features out to make this fit because we've also committed to do those things to those two state funding agencies. This will be minor changes to make it so we don't get bit by single sourcing on a couple of items. The other option is to say you could accept this lowest bid and proceed and we would in due course adjust the budget to increase the funding for the contract inspection and the contingency that five and a quarter. And a number. So now it's open for questions.
Thanks, Mayor. Director Todd, when was this? I think it was two hundred and thirty eight K. When was that originally estimated or scoped? At that price?
The three fifty K in the, in the original, that, that number there, the three fifty. Which goes with the engineer's estimates, what you're talking about. I think we first started talking about this project in twenty twenty one. I think it was a project, it was a project when I was just starting in twenty twenty one that budget we put together in a hurry and just going out, coming out of COVID. And that engineer's estimate, if you back the three fifty back, that's kind of a standard number if we look at the design contract and the construction management part. Our objective all along was to have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project all the way along, talking to the designer, we kept reminding him three fifty, three fifty, three fifty, don't. Get crazy here. And we've made a few tweaks on a few things along the way to see if we can get into that. I don't know if we can get back to three fifty. But this comes back to, it's just so much more. And it has these potential. Pitfalls of if it's ten more yards of something at a hundred cubic yards, that adds up.
And when does this? Sorry, go ahead. And when does this, the money we have from the county and the state, does that sunset?
So state money got extended to the, so the next biennium, the twenty three through twenty five biennium. So it just started. So we got two years for that. The county money can get rolled over. I talked to the county today and they're fine with that. It's an administrative thing to roll that over for another year. So that money can be available to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Allison had lit up, but now she's, okay. Does anybody else have a question? Okay, then Councilmembers UK.
I'd like to. Move to have a resolution rejecting all bids for the construction of the Silvercrest Park Rehabilitation Project. So we can have discussion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Yeah, Councilmember UK still has her mic lit up, so.
I do. I obviously want this. Very much done. I, I'll speak to the fact that this park was very much my saving grace during COVID. Because this is, it was, it's, it's a, it's a very quiet park in general. And we could, you know, when we finally were able to. Walk outside when we knew that we could do that. This was, this is what my, my family and I just spent all of our time and where we actually got to meet other neighbors. Some good friends of mine that I met because we were all just looking for connection with like as much feet across from each other. And it's definitely a park that needs help. When I was on the Parks and Recreation Board, we, we did, you know, many discussions about what, what we would like to see here and what made sense and was feasible. So I don't want to delay this at all. And my motion is because it's a, it's a staff recommendation and I'm going to. Follow the, the experts in, in, in understanding this because I'm curious to know what an engineer's estimate would look now because I. Because it was twenty twenty one and we are twenty twenty three. I'm not saying you're looking for another engineer's estimate, but I'm, what I'm referring to is I do think the costs are up. And so, so I, I get that there's opportunity to look at. What is it that needs to be, you know, what, what are those like high priorities and just look at it fresh again and to bid appropriately at the right time. So. That's why I am moving forward just because it is a staff recommendation to do so. And as much as I, I want it done now, like. Veruca Salt from Willy Wonka's Chocolate Factory, Charlie and Chocolate Factory. My Q is obsessed with that book. That's all I hear. I, I, I just, I want to, I want to follow what staff is recommending.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would ask the rest of council to vote no on this resolution and I'll tell you why I want to proceed. This was scoped a couple of years ago at that price. And I know some of our staff is depleted, but. I'm so proud of the parks in our community and, and, and how pristine the condition is, except for one. Silver Lake or Silvercrest Park. We've already kicked this out a year, so the price is just going to keep going up. Next year it will be scoped even higher. I'm quite sure of it. That's the way this thing works, in my opinion. These people in Silvercrest have patiently waited their turn in line. I personally know because I have coworkers that live there that ask me, when is this park getting done? I get it. It costs a little more, but there's many factors that, that go to as to why the cost poker has gone up. And I think it's across the board. Just like the, the library project, it's time to be a good partner, a good, a good team player with the members of that community. So I'm going to vote no and support the. My second, my second motion after that, if it goes.
I don't see any other. Lights up, but. I guess for me, I have. I have concerns. I'm frustrated that it's taking so long. It seems like that's just the nature of. Life that. We've been talking about this for so long and here we still are. And I would like for the project to start to move forward. I do. Respect your opinion, though, if you think that. I have two thoughts going on. So I respect your opinion if you think that we can actually maybe cut some off by making sure the bid is done a little bit differently. And because of the timing, because maybe in fall, the prices are lower in fall than they would have been in the summer. I guess I'm also thinking, why didn't we think about that in the first place? And then, but as a caveat to that. I'm also. While agreeing with you, this is your recommendation. I'm coming back to this and I don't remember. I, I don't remember which item it was. So, but I remember us having a whole discussion. On an engineer's estimate that nothing, everything was higher than the engineer's estimate and how surprising and shocking it was. A while back, I think you were still in the council then. I don't remember what item that was, but I remember there being a whole question that that engineering estimate. Was so much lower than the bids. So I think I'm not one hundred percent shocked. By that. I think maybe that's something we need to start to expect that the engineering estimate is going to be a little bit lower. But so. I don't know how much better it's going to get, but I guess I'm going to be supportive because you're, you're saying that you think that doing this in the fall would be a better. Option to get. Option to get some better bids in here and we'll see what happens. So that's kind of where I'm at, what my thought process is, but I do want us to get this moving. And start to move forwards, think they have been waiting and. I guess who I look at this and I'm like, the fence hasn't been fixed in a couple of years, I mean, I feel like the fence should be fixed at a minimum, that's kind of bad. Anyway, that's just my thoughts, so. And Councilmember Cavallari lit up.
Lastly, just to answer, we waited on the fence because it was part of the new project. So that's going to sit, so I have a couple of questions for staff then. How much do we have in the parks fund? No, it's off the cuff.
I would say we probably have more than this amount, just because we haven't spent any money a long time, that's in general, we have not had the engineers to do any capital projects. So there's money around, but I don't know.
Seven seventy.
Seven seventy, so to anybody that's on the fence, no pun intended, as whether or not to do the project or not do the project, we do have the funds available.
Can I just clarify that seven seventy, so I know that we have it as a cash balance that's off June two thousand twenty-three. But in terms of looking at whether we've committed the seven seventeen, the budget, that I cannot answer at this time.
Yeah, off the top of my head, but for instance, we talked about replacing the roof at I'm at a park. That's in that money, so any other project that's a capital project for parts money is also tapped against that, so when you. Take money out of one thing, it comes out of another. And those projects, you know, some of those projects are further out in time, but that balance is, is one of the things we manage, they, they manage finance managers long term to say, let's not. Spend all that money, so whatever, if you're a future.
Um, Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, um, so of the funds that we have available. They're allocated to other projects, what are the timeframes for those other projects?
I don't have my capital plan book with me, I apologize. I don't think I pulled up that quick user. I don't know, off the top of my head, apologize.
Okay, so my only point was, you know, are we, if we did. Pass a resolution to. Put more money on this particular project now rather than waiting. Um, would that just? Upend a project we had for four years from now, you know, put that out a little bit further. This park is clearly in need of maintenance, right, and. It, it's been around since I started on the council, right, so I, you know, I, I just want them to have a, I, I want our city to have this park refreshed sooner rather than later.
Um, Councilmember Paddock.
One question, if, if we were to, to move forward with it, who would actually do the work from the city's perspective, or is that a question?
So, so we don't have engineers, we end up going to a consulting firm to do that for us, we don't have anybody lined up yet, that's one of the things Frank is doing for us on, as his last, last act is to help us contract for a city engineer. The different, the, the bid opening was July sixth, we have forty-five days where the bidder has to honor that bid. So within forty-five days, we would have to accept that and get into a little contract. There could be an additional forty-five days by mutual agreement of both parties to extend it. To start the project, but the danger right now, frankly, to start, start this right now, we don't have someone lined up to do the contract management and the inspection. That's what is a little spooky.
Yeah.
And that's just because this recent news that Frank is not here. The reason we didn't, and somebody asked earlier, the reason we get to this earlier, it's just because we have not had engineers for over a year.
Um, Councilmember UK.
Without knowing, you know, the, the length of when the rebid or, you know, that process would look like and, and then when we would be able to start because of rain and, you know, all those kind of things. I would really like in your consideration, if this does pass, in, in your consideration of, of looking at, you know, what. You know, what, what are those things that we can improve, tweak, what, that language that you use, I'd also like to think about, what are the things that we could fix? With current staff or on a smaller base, like the fence or, you know, certain elements like that. And I'm thinking about our experience with the library, because if we keep waiting to like do a. Big new library or they're what they're working on, then we don't get these other things touched and I really appreciated that language of. We see that, but it, it's not feasible now, so I think there are elements to the park that we could be touching on now, because we're not addressing. I can't remember if we're addressing water drainage, I don't remember seeing that, we're not addressing drainage, which was a, which was initially a, a big request, so, so if we're not addressing drainage, then I think we can move forward with. Some other tactile things, I am not a professional, I'm just suggesting that if this does move forward and we are looking for that rebid, that we also think through what can be. Done either in-house or through another contract that would happen and not to like cut costs, because maybe it's better to do the whole thing at the same time. But just so that there's movement, there's progress, which I think is what. All of us hear and what we hear from residents is kind of that, that, that issue with the community, but again, non-expert, not in construction, not. Telling anyone to do, how to do anything.
If Frank's listening and he's going to shoot me, but I'm, I'm, I hear what you're saying and for instance. Take the fence, take that wooden fence out of this contract and just go get a fence company, put the fence in, addresses the falling over fence. Rebid this, you typically bid between November and February, when people are lining up the work for next year, so this wouldn't get done, that's why we have to extend the accounting, it wouldn't get done this fall. Because you can't pour concrete and asphalt when it's wet, wet. But maybe you split this up and do the fence as a separate thing, that's more load and I'm looking at Keegan, this is the kind of thing that we would have Keegan get a contract to do the fence alone. It's not a simple fence, it's not just a simple fence, because there's a, there's a great difference that neighbors got his yard is a foot and a half higher than the park, so that's not a simple thing, but that's a possibility, like I said, Frank, probably shoot me. For thinking creatively like that, but it, because it would, it would require a little more energy to do that, but that's a possibility to think those kinds of things. I, I think the fence is the one thing, I'm just thinking through the project myself, if you said, let's just do the, the basketball court next year versus this year. It's a basketball court, it functions, it's not like it doesn't, the balls don't bounce and the balls run away, the fences there are on the basketball court. But the fence is what shows up is, and the neighbor's waiting for it to, to get fixed, it is not necessarily the city's fence. This is the private homeowner's fence. But we're putting the fence back up because it's important for the park. If it was simple, I wouldn't be up here talking about it.
For sure, um, Councilmember Cavallari has another question.
All right, this will be my last comment, I promise. First of all, there's, we do have money, if money is a concern for anybody, we have six point four million in reef, in re, sorry, number one. Number two, there's a large contingent of folks that live around Silvercrest that feel excluded from the city of Mill Creek. That's just the honest perception that's out there, we hear it all the time, we don't feel like we're part of the city, blah, blah, blah. We know that's not true, but perception, people's perception is reality. We have the funds to do this, I'm prepared to accept hiring a contractor as a consultant on the project, I think it makes sense, I'm not exactly sure why. The only reason we're having this discussion tonight is because we did the same process last year. Where we said, hey, maybe if we scope it out next year, it'll be less money, that's why we're here today, because we didn't do it last year, so I'll be voting no.
Okay, I see no more. Mics lit up, so we have a motion in a second on the table, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
No.
No. Any abstentions? Motion, motion passes four to. Have to count without Mayor House call, so thank you, motion passes four to two.
Thank you, Council, for your thoughtful consideration, appreciate it, it was a tough one.
Um. Now moving on to Mike Todd gets to stay up here and go over the resolution on the interlocal agreement with Snohomish County Solid Waste Services.
Okay, so we've talked about solid waste several times, Adrian, next slide, I'm going to race through a couple recap slides, remember the state requirement is that. Under the RCW. You have to take care of solid waste to reduce, to reduce helmet, help human health impact, protect the environment. Part of that is source separation and I highlighted there, the counties must create a comprehensive solid waste management plan, so next slide. That's what we talked about just a couple of months ago, was remember the county collectively, including all the cities, was working on the solid waste comprehensive management plan, it needs to get approved by the Department of the Ecology. We approved what they, you, you council approved what they proposed and it is in that process with ecology. But remember, it talked about all those different things as part of that solid waste management plan, next slide. And so part of that is the city is required to either be part of a county's plan or do it ourselves, we've chosen to be part of the plan. And at the time when we were talking about that, we pointed out that the ILA, under which we participate with the county on their plan expires at the end of this year, so that's where we're back is to renew that ILA. Next slide. So the elements of ILA, it's got about eight or ten different points in there, but it really breaks down to this, county provides efficient disposal of all solid waste generated in the city, they're in charge of efficient disposal, so think waste, not the things we recycle, not the things we compost, but the waste. They are required to provide efficient disposal, they provide for disposal of household hazardous waste generated by residential households in the city, so that's why you can go up to Smith. Smith Street up in Everett and get rid of your paint or whatever, those kinds of things are provided for households, not for businesses. But they're provided, required to provide that service. They operate a system in a fish financially prudent manner, that's their responsibility, they've done a pretty good job of that. And the county system has to be comprehensive, as defined by their comprehensive plan, by comprehensive, it is this disposal of the trash, but it's also education outreach, those kinds of things, next slide. Our requirement under the ILA is that we participate in their solid waste management comprehensive plan, we helped approve it under the ILA, we've got to live by it. So we're required, we would require, we do require that all solid waste in the city is disposed with the county system, so we're making a deal that says we're not going to take our trash. And send it off to King County through their system. That's not what happens now, but that's why it says that, they need to know that all the flow from Snohomish County goes through Snohomish County through their system, that's how they contract for it, they made certain deals for transporting disposal in the landfill. City is responsible for enforcement of its laws and regulations, so they're not going to take on enforcing any of our things in terms of people putting their carts out. And doing the source separation, that's not their responsibility, it's ours. And then finally, we are responsible, we partner with them, but they have to lead on the outreach and education about solid waste disposal and we have to partner with them, so they. So ILA, if you agree to that, is those kinds of elements. On next slide. Existing ILA spent, it was a twenty-year agreement, it expires the end of two thousand twenty-three, it's a very old agreement, but they didn't really change much in it. The wording has changed over the years, twenty years ago, the document took about three years to go to every city and get signed, there's some really old signatures on that, because they didn't know how to do things in parallel back then, I guess. So it's the same ILA, we don't get a chance to change this, we've worked with them on this, all the cities have worked with them, everybody agrees to this at a staff level, so we're looking for a new twenty-year agreement. People were doing this right now, they're asking us all to do it before September, because in October it's slated to go to the county council, so the county council can approve it and put it in place for. January one, two thousand twenty-four. Next slide, so fairly simple, take questions, but that's the proposed motion would be to adopt a resolution to execute that interlocal agreement.
Any questions? No questions, um, can I have a motion?
Sure thing, Mayor, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the interlocal agreement with Snohomish County for solid waste management.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Mike. Good work, you get to go sit down now. Let me make up something for you to come back up now. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. And it moves to another page, all the committee was Councilmember UK and Councilmember Steckler, were there any exceptions?
No exceptions.
No exceptions.
Do I have a motion to, wait a minute, don't I have, this is, I mess this up every time.
Yeah, you have to say the number, I think.
Yeah, do I have to ask about the second one too? I can.
I believe you do.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, payroll benefit ACH payments, any exceptions?
No exceptions.
I, I may be wrong, but don't you have to say the four hundred and forty-six, six forty-eight point seven two?
I don't think you have to say the exact number.
Oh. Okay, we've, we've been, we've been doing that, but that's okay. No exceptions.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda there?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. All right, moving on to reports, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, the first item is just, we'll need to dash it from council to council, cancel the first two August regular meetings.
Do we have that motion written up somewhere? Okay, do I have a motion to, to cancel the first two meetings?
That's, that's why I'm asking, is it just the first two or?
That is correct, we will per, per, per code, hold one regular meeting on the August twenty-second, it'll be mainly consent items, okay, only consent items, thank you.
And it, and it may be mostly. Remote, it's, it's a virtual meeting, correct?
That is correct, and there will be public comment, I believe, we will follow the same format before and after.
Yeah, just to approve some consent.
And were we going to have all seven or were there volunteers to make a quorum? Volunteers for quorum.
I think.
Yeah. And I'd like to make a motion to cancel the first two meetings in the month of August. Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and the second item is just a reminder that we do have the Philippine consulate. Holding the event this weekend, Friday through Sunday, they will bring in approximately fifteen hundred, two thousand. Customers in to the City Hall North, we do have a new setup over there. Where we will process those, those individuals will, will come in and. The consulate is bringing in a staff, just like they did last year, but thanks to our marketing team, they developed a new process that was a little more efficient regarding. Cars coming in there are lots. And the individuals who are waiting. They will have a different waiting process, so the City Hall's North will not be full of individuals in there and. Last year it was so hot that the HVAC system went out, there were so many bodies, so. They will be in there Friday through Sunday and so we're looking forward to having them in, prior to that event. The consular will have a meet and greet here. I'm not sure what location here at City Hall from six to seven this Thursday. For those of you who have not reached out to our city clerk and would like to attend, please do so.
It'll be in the chambers.
He'll be in the chambers, thanks. And those were my reports, final reports, I'll hand it over to Chief White for policing reports.
Um, Deputy City Manager had a report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so I did put in just a quick agenda summary and an ARPA worksheet. I wanted to make sure that we had some kind of an update on ARPA and where we are, we've had quite a few invoices that we got estimates on different equipment. So I wanted to make sure the council was comfortable with us going ahead and. Following this kind of a format, so when we have. Okay, so let's back up, so when you authorized the three different resolutions. For the twenty-six projects that have been approved for ARPA funding. Council had mentioned they wanted contracts to come back to council for their review. On any project that was approved, so we do have items that we can move ahead with. So we do have items that we can move ahead with, um, that we can really start getting these projects moving that don't require contracts. So a good example is the maintenance, street, sidewalk and safety equipment allocation of $120,000. So we don't have contracts that are needed for the different equipment purchases. So we did have an estimate on, um, the power equipment that had some combi, some blowers and chainsaws for, um, our Public Works Department. And so that was invoiced. And, uh, they gave us a quote of about $8,288.21. Um, and then safety equipment, um, was just under 10,000. So I just want to verify that everyone is comfortable with this kind of reporting. And as these get more complicated, this format will change a bit so that we know exactly where we are, how much has been spent. But I just wanted to make sure everyone saw where we were going with the items that don't require contracts, so they know what's happening. Um, and so as we move forward, if everyone, if no one objects, is we will continue with this reporting. I'll just have it attached at the, uh, end of each agenda, so you can see where we're at. Um, again, if there is anything that does require council input, so say, uh, we are looking at wrapping signs right now. So we're really just looking at the, the poles with the little pointers that say, hey, this is this direction, passports are that direction. We're just looking at wrapping those, um, so that they're refreshed. So that's not a big piece. That's going to be under $10,000 right now, um, on our estimate. But if there's anything, um, so when we start looking at, you know, if the park signage isn't just like a simple wrap, if we decide, hey, we think maybe we want to change it a bit, anything like that, any kind of contract that would be needed, that's going to be going to council. Um, so I just wanted to make sure we saw the ARPA report and that everyone was comfortable with us moving forward the way we've got it set out.
I am.
Good.
I had one question.
Those purchases, if you're okay.
Um, it, it, in, in, uh, the invoicing that you're doing, is there anything that looks like it might be slipping past the 24 deadline or spend by 26? Or we feel like we're pretty, pretty good?
Yeah. Yeah. And so we do have, I do have the last section that's pending. Um, we also do have 1.8 million that we're going to have to allocate. We do have a couple of projects. One of them could take the whole amount, um, fairly quickly. Uh, well, actually two of them, but, um, the ones at the end are the ones that, uh, are still in process and under review. But I, at this point in time, I don't see anything pushing past.
Thank you.
All right, Dame, I have any questions? I don't think so.
Great, well, next, uh, I will hand over to Chief White with his plat, uh, police staffing update and, uh, it's quarterly, it's in dashboards, uh, the handout that you have in front of you. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Protem, Council. Uh, just a quick report. Uh, first, I'd like to start by thanking the Mayor Protem for providing us with the
I think it's your radio.
It's off.
Oh, it is off?
Yeah. Sorry for the feedback. Just have to adjust the mic further away. Um, thank you for the proclamation regarding National Night Out. Uh, just a reminder to everyone, National Night will be, uh, August 1st at Buffalo Park starting at 5:00 PM. Um, it's a great opportunity to be out with the community and get to know everybody, we'll have fun games, uh, along with some treats for the, uh, everyone to enjoy it. So would love to see as many people out there as we possibly can. It's going to be larger than life this year, at least larger than the last few years. So, uh, we're looking forward to a great National Night Out. Um, Adrian, if you could put up the first document as well, just so we can have it on the screen, so people can see.
Are you talking stats?
Staffing, we can go staffing first, please. So in regards to staffing, there's been a lot of change, a lot of ebb and flow in the police department over the last three years. Um, in 2021, or I should say in June, 2021 through June, 2022, we lost seven officers. Um, for various reasons, changes in career field, um, lot, leaving law enforcement, whatever it might have been. Um, eight of 22 through six of 23, we actually hired six additional officers. So we started to become healthy again. But then recently, in the last six months, we've lost five officers, one retired, some lateral transfers out of state and some other, uh, individuals just trying to maybe change the career field. So we've had this
Chief, I don't have a, I don't have a presentation for this.
I forwarded you on the email, did I not?
No. I, I don't think so.
So the documents that you have in front of you, um, show the org chart for where we currently stand today. Um, as you can see in red, we have five vacancies in the police department. Uh, in green, you have two officers, one in dark green that is currently at the academy, one in light green and is waiting his academy date. Um, that is the 23 commissioned spots, including myself as the chief. Um, the deputy director is not a commissioned physician with the police department. Um, we do have, uh, six officers or six entry level candidates that just passed an oral board, and that was approved by the Civil Service Commission. And we also have one lateral, uh, applicant that has applied with the department as well. So we are moving as fastly, as fast as we can through those candidates, um, looking for the best candidate for the position. And we will continue down that path. Um, again, academy dates will be hard to find. They are opening regional academies, uh, that, that will help us get our current officers into those training classes. But it'll be quite some time before we're completely healthy again. It's, it's going to take, it's going to take a few months. Closer to a year, probably. Any questions regarding staffing? Okay, and so we'll move on to the, uh, stat sheet that I provided to everyone, uh, in, in council chambers. Um, you'll see that, uh, we'll start from the left of the screen and left of the page and moving around the page to the counterclockwise. Um, a-actually, great, Adrian, thank you for that. Um, you can see that property and persons crimes are actually trending down in 2023. We're, we're very proud of that. Um, collisions are up slightly. You will also see that, um, criminal infractions, we don't have comparison data for that for 2022. Um, but infractions issued since the first six months of 2023 are 427. Um, the records unit is doing an amazing job, uh, public disclosure. Uh, they've got done, gone through 430 cases, concealed pistol transfers are, are up slightly. Um, the gun transfers is i- interesting. In 2022, there was a lot of legislative intent to have stiffer gun laws. So there was a increase in pistol transfers and sales of those firearms. And that's kind of ebbed off since, uh, the change, uh, in 2023 or since it's the legislation actually took effect. So, um, there's fewer transfers going on now. Um, the property room, we, so far this year, we've taken in 338 items of property. Uh, property release to owners to 23 items. And we're really behind on destroying property that should be, uh, taken care of. It's been, it's been sitting in our property room for too long. Um, but with the addition of that, uh, final records and evidence tech position, or that training is ongoing and we should be starting that process soon. Um, and traffic contacts, you can see, um, we're actually up to 100 and, uh, or actually 1,118 contacts. That's a good number. Um, but again, I think that there's going to be increase, uh, when we get some of these individuals o-off of our training program and out on the road. Last month, we had two officers, um, two officers graduated from our field training officer program. And then last week, we had another. And then next week, we actually are having a fourth person release for that training program. So the, the patrol staffing is on the increase. We still have some investigative spots that need to be addressed. Um, and hopefully some other, uh, spaces to be filled at the bottom of that org chart. They'll help us with some traffic enforcement. With that, I'll take any questions on our stats.
Um, Chief, I have a couple of questions before I, um, move to everyone else. Um, first, I'm curious, I see on the assaults that the number is, um, pretty close to the yearly number for last year. So do we have any thoughts on why assaults are up or?
That's the same time period last year, the first six months of last year.
Ah, got it. So it's not the whole year is based on, okay, that, that makes me feel better. What is going on? And then my next question is, what is animal investigations?
So those are typically dog bite complaints or dog at large. Um, animals at large within the city that are handled by our police support officer. So we stake those out of the equation as more of a, uh, some of them are criminal, um, some of them are civil, um, but she does those investigations. So we like to highlight her work.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. Um, I think that was all my questions then. Um, and that, that makes me feel better knowing it wasn't the whole year of 2022 is the same timeframe. So, thank you. Um, do you guys have questions?
I do.
Councilmember Steckler.
Hey, Chief, uh, question I have is, um, I've been, you know, getting a lot of my information from the, uh, internet, a very, uh, very viable, uh,
Reliable source.
Reliable source, yeah. So, uh, if you follow that, uh, there's like a home invasion every five minutes going on in America today, every city in America. So, uh, where, what? I've had, been seeing a lot of people talking about home invasions and an actual friend of mine, uh, who lives nearby, uh, had a home invasion where somebody, you know, broke through his glass door and tried to come in. And, uh, I'm curious, I don't see home invasion on here. Is that a, 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 a growth area? Is that a? Am I missing it?
That would be in the robbery section.
That's in robbery?
Um, only had six.
Okay.
Go second blue block down. Left-hand side.
Right, robbery.
Fifth or sixth from the
We're talking like six, six, six from the top.
Six. arson, burglary, identity theft.
Yeah, total number six in the same time period?
Six months, yes.
Wow, that's nothing. I mean, nothing, that's six terrible, it's terrible, but it's not like, I probably seen three times that number on the social media, uh, people talking about home invasions and people trying to get in. So it's not as bad as I, I've seen. So that, that's good to know. Thank you.
We're fortunate.
Um, I have other questions, but before we move on to that, um, it's 9:22. So could I have someone maybe to, um, do motion, maybe extend to like 9:45?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to extend the regular meeting until 9:45.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those against, we could all be against it, but I don't know, that would get us anywhere. Uh, so, motion passes, um, to extend the regular meeting to 9:45. Um, and now, um, Councilmember J K has a question.
I do, and this is, um, the mischief and vandalism and graffiti, um, specifically the graffiti aspect, not, you know, looking for numbers, but, you know, um, sometimes uh, uh, what is that connection with the city in terms of reports from, so for example, when I see graffiti, right? We market, um, in the, um, requests to the city to, to clean up, for example, right? But in this instance, is it people like witnessed it and they contact the police? Or is it, are you getting calls like about that stuff to the police? Cause I've heard this a few ways from, um, in the, in the interwebs of, uh, people saying, contact the police if you see graffiti versus
These are incidents reported to police. So if you go into GovQA and you report to the Public Works Department that there's graffiti at a location and that is not forwarded to the police department, which I don't think that those are frequent. But if that were the case, it may not be reflected here. But these are incidents that are reported through our dispatch center. That's how we direct, that's how we mine our data.
Is there an ideal way, um, City Manager Yamamoto, for how, um, for how the, the, you know, what we should be directing the community to be doing? Or, or is it just automatic that you, or is the goal that Public Works would then forward to the police as an FYI?
Well, I think we could use a combination of, uh, it's probably an internal process that we need to work on, uh, cross GovQA and working with, uh, PD. Um, I'm probably not answering your question directly, but, uh,
No.
I, I think it's something that, um, we, we get communications through emails. I do directly about graffiti. Uh, I get some from electeds, um, and some from, uh, I think we see a few come through GovQA as well as the chief mentioned. Uh, I don't, um, think it's an internal discussion that we have to have in terms of how we address it. But then, once we get it, that's another discussion on if we can, and how, you know, do we address it on private property, for example, as well, so.
Sure, yeah, that, that's the question, because it's more for the data for tracking is, I, I'm curious, I'd love to find out, um, when you guys have had that conversation, what, um, the internal process is like.
I, I would say also that this is probably the police incident reports is probably the most accurate reporting that we have. Because sometimes the incident, the graffiti incident has already been reported to the police department. And then it's witnessed by another person doing calls in on GovQA or vice versa, right? So trying to triage that, going back and forth, has this been reported? Has this not been reported? Was this reported through GovQA? Was this reported through the police section? It's, it's a difficult task, but we will do our best to obviously to share that information when we have these incidents.
Yeah, fantastic. It, it's just more, I, I'd like to know that, that process, like, if it gets reported on GovQA, does it get, you know, sent to you guys so that you're aware, um, that you can, you know, double cross it? Or is it, these are the issues that we've had in the city and then it's, then you guys are forwarding it to, um, I, I just want to know what that process looks like to make sure that we can direct people to tell them. If you didn't witness it, for example, but you see it, then respond this way. But if you've seen it, that I just want to understand what we should be communicating with residents. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just great example of that critical, the critical success factors, that data that comes through every month.
This is a great example of that, that critical success data coming through every month, like seeing something like this. This is exactly what I would be looking for from each of the departments. Thank you.
Great job, Chief. A lot of numbers going down across the board. That's great.
Yeah. It's the officers doing it. And I, I mean, as you can see, the one thing that's trending up every year is the calls for service. These guys are out working hard and they're taking a lot of calls for service and we're working with a very short staff right now. So I appreciate the hard work done by them and we'll continue to do the best we can for the community.
Good numbers to share with the media too, let the, let the citizens know.
Um, Martin?
Yeah, one thing, one comment about the graffiti that the Deputy City Manager mentioned is, is, um, Councilmember J K, um, to, to more elaborate on your question, I think one thing, one place that we do probably need to forward, I believe, residents is, I don't think graffiti is, I mean, Chief may differ on this opinion, but forwarding people through our GovQA system. Um, there may be some education that we could do online as well, but, uh, I, I would, would not think that calling, maybe the non-emergency number might be my option, but not 911 regarding graffiti. Um, but, uh, GovQA would probably be the best option and that's something we could talk about internally, about how we board individuals.
Thank you for that. Yeah, whenever I see any Facebook posts, I immediately, you know, let people know to, to, to go through GovQA specifically. Or I sometimes will then make a report if I've seen someone else, um, has like commented on it. Um, so I'm just curious if any of those get to the police and are included in this number.
Yeah, we, we can take it in note when people call City Hall. But what I usually do is when I get calls, I talk to people, the, when people reach out to me, the email, I recommend that they go into GovQA and record because it gets tracked in there. So, um, whether they address it or not, I send it to Director Todd as well, or our chief, um, anyway. But I do recommend everyone go and go few, go into GovQA and actually, um, because it does get tracked and then we are, we're all, we, we're able to kind of track the progress and so forth, but that's what I do.
Looks like you have Director Todd up next. See, see, you weren't done.
I knew I wasn't done. Thanks. Thank you. A couple of quick reports given late hours. So Dobson, Remillard, Church and Cook Property Master Plan Project Update. Adrian, you've got one slide, if you could pull that one up for me. So what's, what they've done so far, we've not had a lot of time to get too deep into this. Oh, there's the slide. Looking at it. Thank you. Uh, the contractor, our consul's been working on this, Bruce D's Associates, again, remember they've been working on this. They have done some preliminary geostructural kinds of look, look at, you know, what is it going to be like to build things out there? And they've done a preliminary wetland recognizance, and that's the scary picture you see on the um, that, this is not a full delineation, because we didn't want to pay for a delineation, because delineation is an aged data sort of thing. But you can see that where we had the little yellow wetland, the green is where it might actually be. And the dotted line is where you would have to buffer with mitigation and a solid black line. And the dotted line is where you would have to buffer with mitigation and a solid black line is where you'd have to buffer without mitigation. And so you could see those wetlands have grown from the, the maps we were showing before. The one in particular, I don't have a good way to point at it, but the, um, right smack dab in the middle of the wetland. I don't know what that shape is, maybe Adrian, it right in the middle. It's right smack in the middle. That one is one that is not in any of our maps. It's kind of hidden back in the, in the trees and I don't think anybody's ever looked at it before, but that's a new one. Not that it's a new wetland, but new to our data sense. So the word, the word from them came back, well, it's about sixty percent wetland or wetland buffers. Maybe we ought to think about a wetland.
Same.
Some sort of feature in there. So this will be part of it. That's going to be part of the challenge. I'm not trying to say doom and gloom. Some of those could be filled. Someone could be mitigated on site, but the point is, want to let you see that that is, it's wetter than we were hoping for. Let me put it that way. We're working on a draft communication, a draft community engagement plan. I've been collecting a list of an advisory group, people we might have as advisors to us that would be the wise souls in the community who are not tied to any special interest group. But could advise us on general needs for youth, for seniors, for. Rich for poor, for different languages, for English language, whatever would be kind of a group that would help us be not a steering committee to direct the project, the kind of advisory. To bounce ideas off of, and I've also collected a very comprehensive list of all the interest groups, you know, so pickleball people on the frisbee golf people and all those kinds of things. Not necessarily the names of those folks yet, but kind of trying to get a comprehensive list of who we might want to engage. Different points of the project. So that's where we are with this right now. Uh, communication, marketing communication team is critical to this. They, as you know, they've been very, very busy with a lot of events. Uh, planner Justin Horn is back from parental leave. He's assigned to this, but he's just back now. And engineers are on this team and that will be a challenge as well. We do have Karen Reed as a continuity from our previous. Engagement. So we're moving slowly, but moving forward on that. The second topic was up there was waste management. They've been working on some numbers. We have yet to discuss that. We've got a meeting on August fifteenth. For our first interchange. My hope is that they're going to give us some pretty good numbers. We're also going to look and see if we tweak that. Um, both what they have as deliverables and the things we expect from them and see if there's a good way to bet. The best way to get the best deal for the community. And finally, we talked about the Philippines engagement event. We've got a dedicated individual over here. So you have to call him Concierge Josh for this weekend. Uh, what we did last year during the Philippines event, they. It was a big event. This is like fifteen hundred people. It's just crazy. And so there were a lot of phone calls and we don't have janitorial on the weekend and we don't have anybody to answer questions. We don't have to get a go fan when it was hot to unlock this door. And so, so Concierge Josh is getting paid. But he's volunteered to be that person this weekend. He's going to represent the city. I'm really proud to have him step up and say, I'd like to do this. And, and be the face of the city over the weekend. So Keegan and I don't get all the phone calls. So welcome, Josh. Thanks for doing that. Appreciate it. Armina, I believe is next.
Thank you, Director Todd. Um, I just wanted to share that we have filled the vacancy of the staff accounting position that has been vacant for three months. Um, I'm happy to introduce Ki Raisong. She is, um. She has over five years of public private accounting experience, um, and, uh, we're very happy that she, uh, joined us. This is her first public service, um, career experience. Um, she has a master's of science in accounting from the University of, um, Texas. A bachelor of science degree in accounting from, excuse me, in finance from, um, Shandong University. And a bachelor of arts in accounting and finance from Durham University. She has also obtained her CPA license from, um, state of New Hampshire. And she speaks fluent English, French and Chinese Mandarin. Um, and she enjoys in her spare time playing the piano and singing. So we're very happy that, um, for her as part of our team. Thank you. And I'm, I'm passing it on to Keegan.
I have one more item, Mayor Proten, before we end with, uh, our finale with Keegan. I just wanted to mention, uh, that I did forget that in my quarterly meetings, uh, that I hold with our partners. It's, it's always been a good opportunity to, uh, both not only communicate what we've done in the past quarter. A lot of it's more operational, um, just a high level project, but also, uh, I learned about things. Uh, their concerns and they always, many times they give me questions prior to even going there. So it's like, I have a heads up on kind of what they're going to ask. Uh, I've recently with the panelists group, uh, the MTC, uh, you know, the Rotary Club, I had three meetings in the past week or so and, uh. Um, there were no questions for me at this time, um, more or less one of. Me just speaking, and so I think that's a good sign to hear that, um, um. I think, uh, a representation of, um, our community to some extent is, is happy kind of with what we're doing so far. Um, Chief White had opportunity to, uh, present in front of Rotary Club as well. And so, um. We're happy that, uh, he's getting out there and meeting with organizations. Uh, the MTC did mention, they want me to give, um, kudos to Keegan and his team. For the work they've been doing on the vegetation management on, uh, uh, Village Green and Dumas. And so, um, just want to mention that for the record. Thanks. Keegan?
So my report's a little less serious. We'll have a little bit of fun here. Um, it's kind of just to let you guys know kind of the things public works has been doing over the past few months, um, over spring and summer. Uh, so I've put together, uh, three questions. The multiple choice answers, like I gave you guys all cards at the beginning. So let me pass these sheets out and then we'll, we'll go over. We'll go over the information.
Good, we're gonna have fun. Want to have fun.
It will not be graded, but you're all on Zoom.
You. I'm wondering, um, because we're supposed to be done in. In like eight minutes. So should we go ahead and just be safe and extend till ten and?
You'll be done.
We'll be done, but we still have our reports.
Oh, forgot about that.
I make a motion to extend the regular meeting to ten PM.
Second.
A motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against, any abstentions, motion passes. Hopefully we won't go to ten. That should cover us.
Okay, so this is, did you know, did you know what public works has been doing? So the public works main crew has been working on a lot of sweeping since the beginning of the year, trying to get the city clean. Um, we all know we have a new sweeper on order. Uh, we've been limping our, our old sweepers by and. Josh has been doing a great job. Um, so the first one is. Sweep material citywide. So I've kind of put these, if you look at your sheet, I've put these in. Kind of something everybody can relate to, which would be silver metal garbage cans. Um, so the first question would be, how many silver metal garbage cans? Of material, this is all fine sweet material, do you think we've picked up spring and summer? Kind of all over the board. Okay, so. Our answer is two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven. So it kind of gives you guys something tangible about how much material these guys are actually picking up off the streets. Um, that also equals to fifty-four of our dump trucks pool. Next one is, so we've been working a lot on Village Green Drive. I'm sure you guys have noticed our guys out there screwing up your traffic. Um. Doing some deferred maintenance on all the trees that are hanging over the right of way. Um, this is something that if we get done and keep up with, it'll take less time every year, as long as we're doing it every year. Um, the guys have been working out there really, really hard. Um, and have taken, they've completely just completed last week. I believe they completed Village Green Drive last week. Um, so I don't anticipate ever having to go through Village Green like that again, as long as we do it every single year. So next question would be, how many silver garbage cans of chipped material? Now, I want to say chipped, because this is condensing all these tree limbs into the, basically the smallest you can. Um, how many silver metal garbage cans of chip material from the trees do you think we took off Village Green Drive?
Keegan, can you say the letter of the answer?
Oh, yeah, he'll say the answer, yeah.
So the correct answer is C, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four. Which also equivalents to seventy-two dump truck loads of material came off Village Green Drive in the past couple of months.
Just the branches.
And that's just branches. That's just how many branches they've cut down and, and think about this, this is, these guys cutting it by hand, hauling it by hand, putting it in a chipper by hand. It's a lot of work. So last question, uh, last bit of information. So our parks irrigation, we went through our parks irrigation in the spring, got our irrigation running. A hundred percent in our parks this year. Which I don't think, as far as I've gotten from the guys that have been here a long time, hasn't happened. Since a lot of them can remember, um, they went through and did a lot of work. Um. So as far as our parks irrigation goes. How many sprinkler ads do you think they tested, adjusted and or repaired? Just in our parks this spring?
Change, there's a couple of B's.
So this will be a surprise to everybody. You're all wrong. The answer is C, three thousand three hundred and sixty-six. Sprinkleheads tested, repaired and or adjusted. Along with that, they also prepared about a dozen water mains. In our parks to get them running this year. So that's remote, that's it for me. Uh, I just kind of wanted to give you guys this to kind of show you what these guys are doing, how much work is getting done. Thank you.
Yeah, that was fun. Um, okay, now moving on to, um, our reports. So I have no report, so I am going to start down the line. So, um, council member Sackler.
Just a quick, uh, congratulations to everybody involved in the festival. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. Tons of volunteers. I saw lots of people out there volunteering. Um, I just can't wait for next year's. It was such a pride day to be part of Milk Creek. Great day. That's all I have to report.
Councilmember Cavallari.
No report.
Councilmember Allison.
I just want to say that I'll be unavailable tomorrow night to go to the, um. The meet and greet with the consulate people and I'm disappointed, but my daughter's having friends over. And I'll also be out of town for the national night out. I'll be working in California next week. So. Uh, I'm sorry I'll be missing that too, but my thoughts will be with everybody that gets to participate in that. And other than that, I have no, the report.
Councilmember Duque.
Well, that Milk Creek Festival was fantastic. I mean, I, uh, volunteered at a booth, um, which I, which I've done in the past, but I also got to volunteer in the, um, in the, um. Wherever Mike Todd and I were buddies with it, the, um, beer.
Beer garden.
Beer garden. Um, it was just great to see all the different types of people. I'm really interested in moving forward with our partnership with the chamber. In talking about and learning about the types of businesses that were in the arts, um, section of the festival to really understand. Um, art, art economy for Milk Creek, because of what the feedback I got from the chairs was that a lot of the businesses were local. Um, it, it is, you know, there, there are many who are do, you know, the normal route, but I would, I'm really intrigued and, and I think there's a really good opportunity to get data. About who's there, you know, what, what do they need? What does that look like? And then for us as a city, just figure out how can we, um. Uh, you know, get to know and meet, um, all of these people. And I know that we have a fantastic booth and, and the Milk Creek Youth Advisory Board did a great job staffing it. I can't, um, tell you how, how, um, wonderful they are and all the staff members who are attending. And I hope, and I, I don't know if this happened, but, um, I do hope that we did have some staff who were able to go and introduce themselves to some of those, um, other booths in the area, um, and walk. Um, up and down, especially in that arts corridor. But, um, thank you to everyone who, who, who volunteered. It was, it was fantastic. Um, I also want to say thank you to the city for really thinking through how to help with the Filipino, um, consulate's visit. Because it was massive last year and it was a fantastic thing, but I do know how much of a headache it was for staff who didn't know how to respond. So thank you for, um, coming in, um, into work because a lot of people need it and it, I did get to not just attend the, um, the, the thing that we had before, but actually went to it. And I saw, and I tried to help with phone calls and it was a whole, it's a whole thing. Um, so I just thank you guys for. You know, it's just fantastic. You saw something instead of saying, we're never doing this again. That's too much. You said, let's, this is a need and let's figure out how to do it well for staff, for all the volunteers. Um, and so just kudos to our Milk Creek City staff for really, um, stepping up and just continuing to, to be great.
Um, council member Paddock.
Uh, also kudos on the, uh, Milk Creek Festival. Fantastic. Uh, I did not make the, uh, finance committee meeting this month. Um, a little bit of telling on myself and then I thought, uh, this is the second time in a row that I haven't, uh, haven't, uh, been able to attend. And I want to thank, uh, Armina for sending out some materials ahead of time so I could ask questions and whatnot and got back to me very, very quickly. Thank you. The reason I bring that up is it occurred to me that I'm unaware of any sort of, um, participation requirements for being a liaison or the lead of any of these boards. Uh, and I understand there are participation requirements for us as council members to be in council certain number of times or what our roles and responsibilities are. And I think at a future date, prior to next year, it would be good for us to revisit what it means to be a liaison or a, or a member of a lead of one of these boards. And agree to what that looks like. And that if we're not showing up as, as we're supposed to. That there's some sort of, perhaps it goes to the next person. So I'll, that's something I'll propose to, to the, the mayor as well, but I'd like to have that discussion before the end of the year.
Thank you. Um, now we will move on to audience communication and I see that Will already has his hand up and has been patiently. Waiting to get to this point in the meeting. Will?
You know, Will Nelson, one four nine two five, twenty-ninth drive southeast Milk Creek. And regarding, um. Councilmember Allison's, uh, question on the library. As I recall from two thousand and five. Based on discussions by city staff at the time. The land that the library sits on, as stated by Director Todd. If it ends up not being used as for a library. The land reverts to the heirs of the original owner. That means that should Snohomish County Library ever be successful in. Getting a new library built, the problem falls to the city of Milk Creek Council as to what to do. Should you lose the library property? Because the last time they talked to the owners. The owners wanted their money and they were very explicit about wanting their money. We lose the memorial unless we want to move the memorial or buy the property as I understand it. So there is, this is a big deal. Should Snohomish County ever want to, uh, build a new library? From a personal standpoint, I felt that the transfer of the library to the Snow, Snow Isle. Was one of the biggest shafting the city, citizens of Milk Creek ever took. One of the, uh, comments made at that time was that we needed money for roads. Well, I think the next year they paved one forty-eighth and that was that and the money was absorbed into the city budget. I don't know how much money it was, but I think five, six hundred thousand dollars a year. Anyway, that's only my estimate. Uh, so you want, the council wants to be very careful with the Snow Isle library people. On what happens regarding the library. There is a tentative plan for a third addition to the library. Which Snow Isle doesn't really want to admit to or like, but it does exist. And if they wanted to do a digital edition, that would be fine with me, I guess. And the reason I say that is because when I worked in the nuclear industry. We were digitalizing our libraries as far back as nineteen eighty-eight. And I'm not a fan of big, uh, library monuments, uh, for people to use. Uh, I think it's a waste of taxpayer money personally. Anyway, my two cents worth. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Will. Um, anybody else for audience communication?
Mayor, I have something for the good of the order.
Um, sure.
Um. For the good of the order, let's make sure that we get Silvercrest Park back for RFQ as soon as possible and not let this project sit on the shelf forever.
I agree. And I just, before we end, I just want to remind everybody that we had, that the next two meetings are canceled in August. And that we will be having a very brief meeting on August twenty-second to approve vouchers. and that we will be having a very brief meeting on August twenty-second to approve vouchers and have audience communication. So if anybody has anything that they want to comment on, um, we will be taking audience communication on the twenty-second um, and doing vouchers. Um, just so everybody has a heads up and just to remind everyone, um, that the next two meetings in August, for August are canceled. So, um, with that, I will close the meeting and end it at nine fifty PM. We got out before the ten. So, um, thank you for hanging in there with us and I will see you next month.